is to give them the opportunity to avail the Finance Minister, um, you know, the evidence that is being adduced against him in respect of all the seven grounds uh, that had been stated in the motion paper. And then thereafter will give the Finance Minister and or his lawyers the opportunity uh, to be heard in his defense. That is what the Constitution expects of us in terms of Article eighty-two four. And so today's procedure um, kickstarts the process of uh, you know, hearing the evidence uh, to be adduced by the proponents of the motion. And then we can have the Finance Minister to be heard in his defense. So uh, basically that's why we are here, ladies and gentlemen, honorable members of the, of the committee. Uh, so um, the Finance Minister has been invited, he is here present. And uh, we will begin uh, by introducing the members of the committee so that the general public, the Ghanaian public will know who is on the committee and uh, who is uh, executing this duty on behalf of the Parliament of the Republic of Ghana. So Honorable Katie Hamon, will you start?
Well, I guess you introduce yourself as you just finished speaking, so I don't need you to introduce yourself.
No problem. Um, my name is Dominic Akuritenga Ayine. I am the MP for Bolga East constituency and a co-chair of the com- the committee.
I propose to introduce myself last, so if you go.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Andrew Kofi Ejapamessa. The MP for Sekendia and Deputy Minister for Energy, a member of the committee.
Bernard Ahnianfor, MP for Akachi South and a member of the committee.
Patrick Bama Okaigwe Central, member of the committee.
Kwame Anye Meduensi, Asante Achim Central, a member of the committee.
Senator Chairman Rollings, Member of Parliament, Clasi Colle constituency and a member of the committee.
I am Samuel Okujeto Ablakwa, Member of Parliament for the good people of North Town in the Volta region, a member of the committee.
I expect the committee to take parliamentary notice of my name and constituency. Uh, yes colleagues, um, we've just been handed over copies of a letter which has been addressed to the clerk. Um, and it's from the Minister uh, in question. I understand that we left out our clerk. Uh, Mr. Clerk, you want to introduce yourself?
My name is Camilo Puma, I'm the clerk to the committee.
You introduce.
Assisted by Dr. Ernest Daffo, he's the one distributing.
That's it? All right, we'll go on with the letter. Yes, we have this letter from uh, Minister of Finance, uh, on the subject of this discussion. Um, I guess it is with a matter that uh, uh, both Dominic and I have discussed. He refers to the letters which have been sent to him, uh, dated respectively as what, the fourteenth and the fifteenth. And then raises the matter of the specifics of uh, the allegations which are made against him. I don't intend to read the entire gamut of it. Essentially, he's asking for the particulars which we just uh, uh, referred to. He is wondering how is it fair that he's able to properly state his position when he only has the skeletal basis of the allegations. So he accordingly claims our indulgence for the full particulars of the facts in support of uh, each of the allegations contained in the, in this uh, letter. And then of course, the relevant supporting evidential um, um, document. He thinks this is not too much to ask for and that it's in the interest of justice that um, the committee uh, assist to this request. Um, considering all that uh, both uh, Dominic and I have said, we, we really um, don't think they should be quite of a difficulty. But let's see how we go, we go, we go by this. Originally, um, as I indicated, uh, committee's view was for um, the hearing to, to, to start and for the Minister of Finance to sit in. Um, and then thereafter, we would have ensured that the transcript of the hearing uh, was transmitted uh, to him and his lawyers. Uh, but it seems to me that it's a rather neat way suggested by him and that um, we ask from the um, proponents of the motion, um, what is it that they have and which we can uh, in all fairness, hand over to um, the Minister and his team to consider and then um, we can take it from there after.
Yeah, um, the Honorable Minority Leader and the ranking member on finance, are there any documents you would be relying on for purposes of making your case uh, for the vote of censure the motion?
Yeah, Chairman, co-chairman and very distinguished members of the committee to whom the speaker have referred, the matter of censorship of the Honorable Ken Oforiata too. We are here, I've seen both of you use the word allegations. In many instances, we are not just alleging. I mean, if I quote the President of the Republic, President Nana Dudankwa states that borrowing of fifty years and per record, that is not an allegation, just to draw your attention. So don't reduce our censorship motion to allegations. We think, we think.
No, 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 no. Honorable member, I would respect. Let's get something right here. Um, no, 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 no. One second, bear with me. Could you, could you turn off the thing? Yes, okay. Um, on the, on the Thursday, the tenth of uh, November, you had the privilege um, to raise the motion on the floor of the House. I don't have the hands out here, uh, it was, if it is, yeah, I see. But uh, uh, whoever was there heard you, um, loud and clear. The motion was based on the specific issues. One, two, three, four, five. Those are by any account allegations which are not fleshed by any evidential um, documentary evidence. I mean, not fleshed up. So they are essentially allegations. We are saying by the, by virtue, by the provisions of the relevant laws, constitution and whatever, natural justice. In fact, I read yesterday, seventeen seventy-three, a guy said that even God gave Adam the opportunity um, to explain himself. One day was the accusation about uh, the, what, what, what was it there? Was it the mango or the fruit or whatever? Yeah, so uh, 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 in fact, so it is, it's very allegation as we see. So if you have anything to please give us, don't let us.
Yes, I appreciate that. So Chairman, I'm Haruna Idrissu, Member of Parliament, Tamale South Minority Leader. I'm accompanied by the Honorable Atu Forson.
Hon- no, um, excuse me, yeah. First of all, there was a preliminary question about documents in relation to the letter. But when, yes, but, no, he can't do the oath before that.
Uh, Chairman, thank you very much. I invoked Article eighty-two of the nineteen ninety-two Constitution which provides and gives Parliament the authority and mandate to call ministers to order by exercising the power of a vote of censure to which the minister has every right under the same Article eighty-two for to debate himself during the debate. I'm not aware that the minister has been denied that opportunity by Parliament or by me. So Chairman, to proceed, I'm tendering in evidence parliamentary debates Thursday tenth, November twenty twenty-two in evidence for, to guide you.
Wait a minute, do we have a, do we have a list? Do we have a list of uh?
Chairman, I'm tendering my first evidence.
What, what, what were, you have a list?
By every record parliamentary practice is an authority to be relied on. We will make reference to the nineteen ninety-two Constitution, the Public Financial Management Act, the Fiscal Responsibility Act, the Bank of Ghana Act and breaches their own and we need evidence to support his breaches of it. We are simply advocating strongly that his performance is incredibly disappointing, that he's not fit to.
No, but, but, but wait a minute.
The majority of you buy.
Uh, Honorable, uh, Haruna, Haruna, calm down. I mean, don't, sorry. We wouldn't allow this meeting to degenerate, uh, to generate into any kind of farce. Let, let's calm down. We know why we are here. You made the motion, you moved it on the floor. The speaker is referred to this committee. We, we got to be, be calm about it. And then uh, we're going to take political issues here. Let's deal with it the way it is. Yeah, we will let you. Our colleague wanted to make a point. His hand was always up.
Chairman, thank you. I, I was wondering uh, how the proponent is beginning to tender when he hasn't given his warning. In any event, I thought that before we proceed on that route, would make some determination as regards the request that is contained in the letter that the Finance Minister has submitted.
We're going, we're going to deal with that. I wanted him to settle down. He was already highfalutin.
Okay, so you want, yeah, so the question I asked was in relation to documents to be tended. And the Honorable Minority Leader has listed a number of documents that will be tended in support of the grounds. If I may change the, in, in support of the grounds. Um, they seem to me to be, all of them, public documents. They are documents in the public domain. Are they not? Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, yeah, just, just, I, yeah, on that point, on that point. Okay, Honorable.
Uh, microphones. I'm not sure if you are privileged to some information that we do not have. You are, what you just said, you said that the Minority Leader had actually given a list of the document he intends to. He, he, he was saying that I intend to rely on this, I intend to rely on this. But what I will propose is that let the proponents introduce themselves with greater respect. We have the Finance Minister here. We cannot assume if he's accompanied by anybody, less of the introduction. And then after that, this letter, we can attend to uh, this letter, decide on this letter, whether we are giving him.
Uh, thank you. I mean, I think we, we, we already mentioned the fact that the Finance Minister is here. So fact of his formal introduction, he is not here today to give evidence or anything. So fact of his formal introduction, I'm not sure. But if you insist, uh, Honorable Finance Minister, does he, does he have to rise up or what? To be recognized or what are you suggesting? What, sit down to be recognized or rise up to be recognized? Which one?
Whether he's here in his own capacity or is accompanied by a lawyer, we need to.
Finance Minister, um, your presence is recognized. Who else is with you? Whose presence has to be recognized? The Honorable, uh, I don't know, who, Mr. Gabby Otudaku, yes, hello, I see that you are around. Deputy Finance uh, Minister number two or three. Are you three or two? Or what? And then who else? He's a, she's a colleague, so she's, okay, Abra, you also have to be, yes, Abra, you are here. Does that satisfy that requirement? Uh, I'm, I'm talking to you, uh, yeah, does it satisfy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Good. So let's get the, uh, the, the issue. You say, we do, the, the swearing of the oath and whatever would come when we get to the meat of it. There is a preliminary issue that we are trying to address here, isn't it? So um, uh, Haruna, listen, you know, I don't stand on the protocols and all the honorable unravel and those things. I don't deal with those. So what is Haruna is Haruna, you know, so Atu is Atu. That's how we're going to deal with this matter today.
Why is Diary's?
Absolutely, yeah.
My, my, this friend, Diro.
Sure. So that's how we're going to deal with this matter. Yeah, okay. You, you had, you had a colleague, very well. You were rattling through it. I was confused myself. So what is the?
Atu Forson introduced himself and then.
I've already introduced Atu. Atu has been introduced, you know, so let's get on with it.
Introduce himself, Chairman.
Mr. Speaker said the other day that somebody could take on the contract and do it on your behalf. You remember that? So Atu, unless of course you, you resist the.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, my name is Cassiel Atu Forson. Um, I'm here with the Minority Leader. The document we'll be relying upon today um, for the purposes of the hearing will be one.
You, you have a list, you have a list?
I'm reading them to you.
You don't have a printed?
I've already sent to the clerk, um, when the clerk sent me a message via email and the Minority Leader, we responded via uh, the same WhatsApp and they gave the information. So I'm just reading them to you. Okay, for the records, and it's important for the records.
Mr. Chairman, please, um, seated right with a clerk, can he respond to that fact? Whether he's received the list of documents to be relied on from the proponents of the motion? Thank you. Very important.
Yeah, the clerk, read what we sent you.
For now, I've, I'm yet to receive um, information regarding that um, we've had some discussions and I asked for it. But he promised sending it. I've not received maybe.
Um, that is wrong. I sent you, you sent us a letter via WhatsApp. And as part of the letter, at fourteen thirty-eight yesterday, I sent you four links, four links. One is the twenty twenty, twenty twenty staff report. I also sent you twenty of, of the staff report of the IMF is here. And the same fourteen thirty-nine, I sent you twenty twenty-one staff report of IMF. I also sent you twenty twenty, twenty nineteen staff report. I sent you the Fiscal Responsibility Act twenty, uh, Act nine eight-two. And then the budget statement for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. These are documents we sent to you. Um, you also asked us to write it formally. And what I sent to you is that since you, you sent to us via WhatsApp, I'm responding via WhatsApp with those data. And then when we come here, we tender them in evidence. So that was my response to you. And this is what the communication I had with you. So if you can read exactly the details of the communication that was sent to you.
Mr. Chairman, it's, that is true. They account, uh, Honorable Atu indicated. But if he will check his um, WhatsApp record, we had written formally to him in the letter, but because it was late, so we took a picture of the letter and sent to him. So he sent me a list of documents. And I remember reminding him that, yes, I have that, but because we wrote formally to you, it will be appropriate that you list those, all those documents in the formal letter, which he promised to do. But in actual fact, he sent some of those items individually.
So what, you were requiring, waiting for the response in a formal letter?
Formal letter, yes. Because, because, because it's a record.
We are here, we can lead and let you take record of what we intend to rely on. One, Chairman, nineteen ninety-two Constitution in particular Article eighty-two. The PIAK report.
Uh, Minority, Minority Leader, Minority Leader. Uh, uh, I'm, I'm listening, go on, I'm listening, Harun.
Chairman and colleagues, uh, we rely on the Fiscal Responsibility Act of twenty eighteen, Act nine eight-two. In particular, the section uh, two and four, which emphasizes the vote of censure as captured in Article eighty-two. We would also rely on the Minister's budget policy statement for twenty twenty-two, referring him to twenty twenty-one, twenty nineteen. Then we intend to, as the Honorable Atu Forson have said, reference the staff, uh, 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 the uh, International Monetary Fund Article Four Consultation Staff Review for twenty nineteen. And would do so, uh, request for disbursement, staff report International Monetary Fund uh, under the Rapid Credit Facility twenty twenty-one and then twenty twenty-two. And then uh, breaches of the, breaches of the Bank of Ghana Act.
Sorry, sorry.
Six one two of two thousand and two.
Harun, we are getting confused here, we are getting confused here. Calm down, we are getting confused here. Uh, co-chairman, uh, don't you think a little way of going about this is to give them some time? Uh, to, yeah, uh, to, yeah, to get this in, um, not some thirty minutes, um, whatever would do. So that we, we really understand. He's running through. I'm able, only able to write Article, uh, what, Act nine eighty-two. And then twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, I've written budget against it. The rest is doing the Speedy Gonzalez. I can't get it, yeah? Yes, Atu, order that.
Mr. Chairman.
No, Atu, Atu, before you come in, okay. Uh, two of my members have their hands up. The Honorable Okujeto and then Honorable Lieutenant Senator Rollings.
Your members.
Two of the members of the committee.
Chairman. Co-chairman, if I can have your attention. It is important to acknowledge that the proponents are not refusing to make available documents that they will be relying on. The Honorable Minority Leader, who is a distinguished leader of this house, is providing the list. I do know that at committee meetings and even at plenary, Hansard records proceedings. If you as chair cannot follow, the clerks and the Hansard department.
That's rather patronizing. Would you want to rephrase it?
The point is that we have a tradition in this house.
I take exception. Would you want to phrase it? Rephrase it?
Rephrase what, if I can be clear?
If you as a chairman cannot follow it.
All right, let me rephrase that. So if the chair is having some difficulty probably with the pace, you said the Speedy Gonzalez, if I'm quoting you uh, correctly. I'm only drawing attention that we have traditions and practices in this house. There is a clerk, there is Hansard department, there.
What is the use of the clerk, the Hansard department, when the human individuals who are supposed to be in charge cannot follow what is going on because of?
This is a, this is a house of records.
A house of records.
The, the list, the list. Chair, I, I don't think that we should be so rigid and, you know, uh, we are, we are, we are.
By simply asking him to put it in there.
It is beginning to appear as if we want to just place impediments in the way.
Not at all, not at all.
There, there's.
If you are viewing that, you are not following and for that reason, what is the clerk and the Hansard should take over. Hansard should take over from the human beings?
Honorable Katie Hamon, you know that there are practices and traditions in this house. There are those whose duty it is and they are paid by the taxpayer to record proceedings. Hansard department, the clerks are table. So the list they are providing.
I mean, we got the point.
We have, we, we have already said, we've already said that we will provide the transcripts of today's proceedings to the Honorable Finance Minister. So I don't think that we should, we should belabor the point. Let's make progress.
They've wrote a letter in which they're making the same point that we ourselves have been struggling with. How do we make sure that as fairness, they got the evidence? The letter is simply saying that what, I want the particular, the specific. I'm happy they started telling us what is that they have. I've seen a bundle of those things over there. But look at the way he was going on about it. We couldn't follow. Now you are referring me to Hansard. We'll get a Hansard tomorrow. What we do today before the Hansard comes tomorrow?
They, you know, they record proceedings live. There, there are traditions we follow in this house, Honorable Katie, you know.
Let, let, let's see, let's try again, let's try again. Calm down.
Honorable, Honorable Katie, there are Hans, Honorable Lieutenant Senator Rollings and then Honorable Kame, Anye Medu. Okay, and then Honorable Ahnianfor first and then Honorable Patrick Bama and Mesa.
Thank you. Thank you, co-chair, if I may. I think the bottom line is you're asking for a list. They're here. This would not be the first time where in real time they can offer the list and it can be typed out while we're here so that we can proceed. We're already one hour behind schedule. This is something that's of great importance, not just to the house, but to the country. So I think it's important that we, we facilitate the process as much as possible. Nobody's refusing to tender any documents in. So if you need a list now, that can be typed out and presented to you while the, 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 the proceedings can, you know, carry on.
Honorable Kame, Anye Medu.
Mr. Chairman, apart from we ourselves deciding and then now informing the proponents that we would want to have the list of documents that they intend to rely upon. The would-be respondent has also written that you would want to get a list of documents that they intend to rely upon. It is not for the respondent alone. We as members of the committee, we must be informed of the document they intend to rely upon. And I think this is right. If you need some minutes or some hours to actually put this list together, I think that the coaches, put yourself, eh, put your eyes together and allow them the opportunity to give their list out. Where it's not a matter of reading out the list, we may miss some of that. So if you have the list and the clerk wrote to.
Kame, I think you've made, you've made a point.
He has written this and respond to that.
Can, can we hear the Honorable Ahnianfor on this matter?
Co-chairs, thank you very much for the opportunity. Co-chairs, I, I have read the letter emanating from the Finance uh, Minister making some requests. One, full particulars of the facts in support of the allegation. Then two, the relevant documents or evidence in support of the allegation. Order eighty-two, uh, Article eighty-two of the nineteen ninety-two Constitution is very clear that the minister during the debate must be heard. Now, opportunity is now being given for the minister to be heard. However, we want these allegations to be repeated before the minister. Whatever evidence that is available would be given. The supporting documents would be made available and nobody is pointing a loaded gun at the minister to respond today. So the minister can take the evidence, can take the documents that will be tended before the committee, look at it and tell the committee that give me two hours, give me one day, give me two days to take a look at the evidence and the documents made available for the committee and myself to enable the minister to be heard in debate of the motion.
Honorable Patrick Bama.
Chairman, I think Bernard has made my point. Thank you.
Honorable, uh, Ejapamessa.
Chairman, I, I have a contrary view. Because this proceedings that we are undertaking, like the Minister roughly indicated, is a quasi judicial proceeding. Now, the purpose for which disclosures and exchange of documents are made is clearly known to all of us. It's to prevent the element of surprise. Now, I fail to see how the list that was contained in the letter that was submitted to the minister in themselves constitute facts for which he can be asked or called upon to respond to. We can take our time and read each one of them. So what the minister is asking for, and I don't think it's too much to ask. Yes, people have suggested, my colleagues, that why don't you do it after the fact? When people, no, hold on, hold on, Chairman. When the evidence has been laid, when the facts have been presented and then you submit it to the Finance Minister for him to then come back and respond. He is saying, give me the facts and the evidence upfront, consistent with my rights, so that I can prepare and come and face my accusers. I don't see that as an honorous ask at all.
Honorable, uh, uh, Honorable Minority Leader and then Honorable Atu Forson. Um, the list that you've given, is that exclusive? Or there are other documents that you will rely upon? Is that list exclusive?
Chairman, if you can hear the Honorable Atu Forson, who will respond to your initial question. After him, why are we here? To give evidence?
Yes.
The minister is here to listen to.
My name is Gina and this salon is where I work.
Good morning to those who speak with English like I do.
That's Bea, Assistant Madame, always cleaning boss.
Sophia, so can't you sweep the place? Do you know what I went through last night? I had run into the whole of the night, but I managed to be here today.
That's Sophia. She's in the Guinness Book of World Records for giving the most excuses.
I am not missing any trauma today.
Ow, you're burning my skull.
Maybe I missed that again, my family riches. I'm sure they've located this salon.
Good place.
Hey, 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 look at my prophesy.
That's Hannah, always acting religious.
I didn't see you on Sunday. I hope it's not about that gentleman.
Is he cheating? If he was just cheating, it wouldn't have been a problem. He put that foolish girl.
Sometimes you just have to figure out things you are doing or not doing right.
Especially with the bedroom things, you know, maybe you're not doing it right. Ask God for more style.
Our grand boy is back. Look, today I have hip pad and Botox pad.
You like this? Your Botox is like my pump.
Which part of your body do they want?
I'm gifted, the owner of this salon.
Good. Now that's our boss. Hey.
Last time the weak copy came to pick, you still have your body money.
Ask Gina, I paid her. She's all in.
You've already met your new colleague, have you?
Are you straight?
No, I'm not. I'm crooked.
The hairdressers returns on seventh December twenty twenty-two at seven thirty P M, only on City TV.
If you go further, let me just skip to the last charge, charge seven. It says gross mismanagement of the Ghanaian economy, which has occasioned untold and unprecedented hardship. If you give us PIAC report, if you give us staff reports of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, with what you respect, it would take us about maybe two months to go through all that. And it would not be fair to the Minister of Finance to be ambushed and right here without any preparation to start answering questions. And in any event, Mrs. Chairman, if we do not constrain the accusers within the four walls of what they intend.
I think he objects to being called an accuser.
Well, um, how would you like?
Chairman, very, very strongly. I believe if I could represent when he himself says that.
I do apologize. I do apologize.
Ignition. We are.
I do apologize. May I, may I just, I do apologize.
And then, Chairman, if you can just one minute, you see.
Uh, uh, let me just finish.
Twenty-first June twenty twenty-two.
I don't want to get him off.
Then give us evidence that data bank benefited, benefited one thousand fifty-nine million between twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one from bonds issued and from borrowing. And then, Chairman, as I said, National Cathedral, we see a warrant signed by the minister for one thousand forty-two point seven million. We tender that in evidence, we back it with evidence. Thank you.
Mrs. Chairman, first of all, my apologies for, for calling you an accuser. Uh, Mrs. Chairman, all we are asking for, and if I just, let me just repeat, before we start this, this proceeding, all we are asking for in the interest of justice is that we should be furnished with the full particulars of the facts in support of each of the allegations contained in the letter. And then.
If I may, I may, uh, chip in here. Um, some of the documents listed, in fact, all the documents listed are public documents. And, um, I mean, some of them are altered by the Finance Minister himself. Right? They have, they've been altered or they are in the custody of the Finance Minister himself. Right? So I would, um, disagree with you if you were to suggest that even in respect of those documents, the Finance Minister needs a lot of time to study them, especially when he is the author of the documents. And some of them, under the laws of this country, report, no, they are. So, yeah, can we, can you land and then we can, we can make a ruling on it?
My, my landing is pretty simple, Mrs. Chairman. The documents are fine. But before we even be able to look into the documents, we want the charges to be complete with the particulars. That's all we're asking. Thank you.
The, the other thing, um, that I want to point out, uh, go to, um, the, you, I mean, you and your client and as well as the Ghanaian people, is that these are not charges, that this is essentially a constitutional political process that grounds on in a motion cannot constitute charges. And this is not a quasi judicial process. In fact, it is not an actuarial treaty process because this committee is not an administrative body. If you read the language of actuarial treaty, it is very clear that administrative bodies, okay, must act with fairness and reasonableness in the decisions that they take. We are not an administrative body. We are a political body mandated with the task, you know, of investigating, making fact findings with respect to the grounds stipulated in the motion. That is the essential task that we are, we are here to execute this morning. So I would, uh, advise that or caution against the use of charges. We are not charging the Finance Minister. And in fact, I do not think that the resultant, uh, um, document can be, can be, can be the basis of any criminal charge in a court of computer.
Going forward, can we use the phrase allegations? They are allegations, aren't they?
They are grounds, grounds of the motion.
Yeah, the baking allegations. All right. So we stick to the grounds, but we don't see allegations.
Yeah, they're supporting grounds.
No, 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 no.
They're supporting evidence for the grounds stipulated in the motion.
So supporting evidence for the.
The grounds stipulated in the motion.
Okay, so but let's deal with this application and then we, we can.
But, 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 Mrs. Chairman, I take your point. So let's stick to the, the word you use, fairness. Okay? In the interest of fairness, whether they are grounds or they are charges, it is important that we furnish the client with the particulars of each ground. That's, that's all. Before this process.
That, that, that can be contested. So I think you said enough, we, we can contest it.
But Chairman, why are you still there? Did you read, did you read Savant Foras? You said gross mismanagement of the Ghanaian economy, which has occasioned untold and unprecedented hardship. Did I hear that from you? Did you buy petrol on your way coming here or?
Yeah, Honorable Minority, Honorable Minority Leader. You are, you are cross-examining the council. I, I think, uh, we will protect him from such cross-examination. Yes. All right. Honorable Council, you are, you are, you are discharged from, uh, the seat. Thank you. Yes. Okay.
Actually, why not let him sit there? Remember that we need him again, as he have to go and come back there.
Well, you, you can, okay, he's conferring with his client. All right.
Mr. Co-chairman, I, I think, sorry? Yeah. What we're thinking about is to give you the opportunity to take the documents that you referred to and then specifically point to the paragraphs you're talking about. We're discussing, for example, uh, uh, what do you call it? A budget of a thousand pence, for example. Where is he going to look at? You tell us that you'll be looking at budget of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-two to a media. Listen, well, read all of that. Chairman, so let's take about one hour.
Chairman.
No. You, you. Atu, you are going to dictate to the, 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 the big boys here, the two of us here, what time? We decide on the time, you don't decide on the time.
Mr. Chairman, just to tell you that we don't need one hour to do this. It can be done in five minutes.
We, 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 we in charge.
No, we are the ones to do the job and we don't need that one hour.
Atu, without us, you can't do this job.
No, Mr. Chairman, just to tell you that five minutes is enough.
I'll do you over.
Because we have it here.
I'll do you overroot. We need one hour.
To elucidate for your purposes. For instance, if we say to this committee that we will be making reference to report of Auditor General, when you give us the opportunity to speak to the Auditor General, we then in our submission, as we sit here, would have referred you to page ten of the Editor General's report, where the Minister of Finance reports two billion and then Controller reports three billion.
Aaron, wait a minute. Council, Mr. Ojeda, can you come over, please?
With the variance. So we would have spoken to the issues based on what is contained in official documents.
Mr. Ojeda, go, come here.
We've passed here, we have finished. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman. No, Atu, you don't have to. We have already given the floor. Please, let's. Honorable Atu Fosun, I, I just perused, uh, through your list on twelve. Which of the PIAC reports? He said.
Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty. And probably the half-year report for twenty twenty-two. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. And then half-year. Half-year twenty twenty-two. Counsel, are you ready to address us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I've, I've spoken to the client.
Mr. Chairman, for clarity, um, I am not part of the proponent, I'm not a proponent of the motion. So should I still, because of the wording you use, am I still going to be sworn?
You are, you are going to give evidence before this committee.
So, but because of the wording you use, that's why I want to get clarity. Because for the proponent of the motion, it was moved by, uh, seconded by honorable.
The, the motion, the motion for all practical purposes emanated from the minority.
Exactly.
And, and, and in fact, I, I myself am a proponent of the motion despite the fact that I'm sitting here. All right. Thank you.
He wanted to dance. So kindly repeat after me. I.
I Haruna Idrisso.
Solemnly swear.
Swear by the almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give.
That the evidence I shall give.
Before this committee.
Before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me.
So help me God.
Thank you very much, Honorable Atufosin.
Can I repeat after me? I.
I Cassiel Atufosin.
Swear by the almighty God.
Swear by the almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give.
That the evidence I shall give.
Before this committee.
Before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Uh, thank you very much. Um. Honorable Minority Leader and Honorable Atufosin, the ranking member on finance. Um, you are aware that this is a referral from Mr. Speaker pursuant to order one oh six one of the standing orders of this house. Um, you are also aware that on the tenth day of November, that is Thursday, November tenth, twenty twenty two, uh, the honorable minority leader did move his motion before the House. And, uh, uh, that is the same motion that has been referred to us. It's reported in the Hansat at page, at paragraph eighty three of the Hansat of that day. Um, your duty here is to lead evidence before the committee in respect of each of the grounds stipulated in your motion. And so I would give you the opportunity, I mean, the chairs will give you the opportunity uh, to execute that duty. Um, I'm told that the honorable minority leader will first make a statement and then the honorable Atufosin will then proceed with leading the evidence.
Understandably, I would like to proceed by tendering in parliamentary debate official report of tenth November twenty twenty two in evidence, which is the motion I move, which was equally seconded by the honorable Muntaka, expecting full debate. And Chairman, as I said, we are dissatisfied with the performance of the honorable Minister for finance. And we think that he is not competent enough to continue to hold office as Ghana's Minister responsible for finance. Because, uh, Chairman, as we have said, so since I took counsel on on gross, uh, seven, gross misery of the Ghanaian economy, which has occasioned and told a non-presided hardship. I'm just taking one.
Sorry, what, what are you doing now? Go, go on, settled. Go.
Honorable Minority Leader, may you proceed?
So Chairman, we have grounds. And grounds, I'll just take two and yield the floor to the honorable Minister, uh, honorable Atufosin. And as I said, uh, let me start with National Cathedral. I mean, Ghana, very respected religious country where there is coexistence, both Muslims and Christians alike. Nobody is against the president promising and honoring God with the cathedral for the purpose of the expression of their Christian faith. But when public resources is used for that purpose, it needs us to, uh, call into question. So the clerk of the committee, I just gave you a warrant signed by the Honorable Minister for finance for some amount of money for the cathedral. And, and that's what you are holding, the first document, just give me that. So I'll tender it this in evidence and say that we are aware that by warrant signed by Honorable Kenofurata Minister twenty ninth October twenty twenty two and expenditure one then forty two million, seven hundred and sixty two thousand, five hundred Ghana cedis was allocated for the construction of the cathedral. Want to know when parliamentary approval was granted for this purpose? And then also I refer to the auditor, the auditor general's report. Uh, and Chairman, what we say for instance, I just pick two, as I said, I yield to the honorable Atufosin fiscal recklessness today, what is Ghana's national debt position? We have been told by the World Bank and IMF that our national debt stock exceeds four hundred and fifty billion Ghana cedis. As was inherited in twenty seventeen, it was one hundred and twenty billion Ghana cedis. Servicing debt, the amount of money we now spend as a country to service debt at end of year twenty twenty one was thirty seven billion Ghana cedis, dialling to forty five billion estimated by close of this year. This can only be as a result of irresponsible borrowing. You have borrowed.
So where, where are we getting all these figures? You rented a few figures here, where are we getting them from?
The, the Minister's statement and then from the World Bank.
They are there.
Yes, yes, yes. But the World Bank even says that by end of this year, our GDP was likely to be ninety nine percent of GDP. So I'll use that, I just.
May I comment? And Mister Chair, I'll be grateful if I could be directed on what of the points is he speaking on? Because I.
Turn this thing down. Uh, we, we keep on pleading. We wouldn't allow this meeting to degenerate. It won't be fair, it will be fair. You should catch the attention of the chair. Raise the point, let's be clear that we, we know what we are going to, uh, going to raise. We, we can't be cutting across like that. We discussed all of this yesterday, it can't be right.
And, and honorable members, please allow the, uh, proponents of the motion to flow and then note down any critical questions that you want to ask them. Okay? So please.
Mister Coach Chairman, I, I, Harun, I thought that you were starting with the National Cathedral. Have you finished with it and moved away from that?
Yeah, I'm done.
You done with the National Cathedral?
Yes, I've given you my evidence on that.
Uh, that is the, the document that you threw.
Yes, yes. And Chairman, on hardship, I'm sure you yourself, you pay for fuel, you buy fish.
I don't buy fuel, so don't talk about me, I don't buy fuel. I don't have a car, I don't buy fuel.
While we are led here that there is excruciating hardships and people's real income have been washed away by inflation. And Chairman, Chairman, I'm on inflation. And on inflation, I'm not quoting any person but the President of the Republic on his Sunday address to the country. When the President himself stated, and Chairman, with your indulgence, I quote, "The whole world has been taken aback by the speed with which inflation has eaten away people's incomes. Economists and small have experienced over this year alone the highest rise in cost of living over a generation, the highest rise in government borrowing, highest rise in government borrowing. These are the worst of President Nana Dudankwa Okufuado. In over fifty years, the highest rise in inflation for forty years. This inflation has contributed to the unacceptable hardships that Ghanaians are going through. And we are holding the honorable Minister for finance holy and solely responsible for that, the worst of the present, I continue. The steepest depreciation in their currency to the US dollar over the last thirty years. Twenty seventeen, one US dollar was to four point two Ghana cedis. Today, one US dollar is fifteen Ghana cedis. That has meaning for businesses in Ghana. The cost of doing business is unacceptably high for businesses. The pharmaceutical industry is complaining because it affects their imports and they are made to pay more. The depreciation of the city has affected even Malacola women who cannot trade effectively because they've had to lose and lose because this is a consequence of their borrowing. Also, you now have what we call, as we reference Bank of Ghana Act. The Bank of Ghana has exceeded its emergency support and financing for government for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. We'll leave the exact figures. But the law, the Bank of Ghana Act, Chairman, that I may refer to, says that the minister is allowed to do up to ten percent of previous year revenue. So it's five percent. I'm generous to even give them ten percent. So if you have ninety billion, uh, five percent of it would have given you four point five billion. So if you spent up to nine point five billion or even you spend up to fifteen point nine billion, that is in breach of the Ghana, Bank of Ghana Act. And that itself is contributing to the increase in inflation, which is affecting real incomes. So Chairman, let me at this point thank you for appearing as I quote the auditor general report. And you see, we are saying that the minister must give us data to rely on. And I'm holding here the report of the auditor general of the public accounts of Ghana, General Government for the year and the thirty first December twenty twenty one. And I refer to page ten, paragraph on annual budget funding amount, reported by the Ministry of Finance itself, amounts to two billion, zero six one, one two two, six zero seven, whereas Controller Accounting General reported an amount of three point three billion. So in various of one point three billion. Somebody must explain this to the Ghanaian public why you have this.
This is in respect of which one?
Annual budget funding amount, A B F A.
No, that's in relation to which of the, um, the.
Paragraph twenty three, paragraph twenty three. Paragraph twenty two. Who observed significant differences in the revenue figures reported by the Controller Accounting General.
No, this is in support of which of the, I called them allegations. I think Coach Chairman says we shouldn't see allegations. Which one, uh, which of the numbered, uh?
Number four, and they are here to the honorable Atufosin deliberate and dishonest misreporting of economic data to Parliament. So when you have him say two billion, Controller says three billion, who are we to believe? Then the honorable Atufosin will come in and show you a graph to, uh, expand more on four. So I yield to Atufosin. I'll come back again. I've referred to the auditor general's report. I've made comment and then prices of goose you said when you were coming, you didn't buy anything.
You, you bought a petrol for me, don't worry. You bought it in my hands, I didn't buy, don't worry, you bought it for me.
Okay, the honorable Atufosin, can we, may we hear you? Counsel, you have an objection?
Yes, um, Mrs. Chairman. The, the list that have been provided does not include the auditor, auditor general's report. And this is the, the danger that we pointed out. If we are not careful, there will be surprises at every turn of these proceedings. And as we sit here, the Finance Minister of the Republic has a responsibility to be working on the budget, to be negotiating on the IMF program that the whole country is waiting for. And if we're gonna stay here and spring surprises at every turn. Mrs. Chairman, it may be difficult for us.
Uh, Honorable Counsel, Honorable Counsel, the, the, um, Honorable Minority Leader did mention the auditor general's report. I think it is, I mean, in the type in that there was an omission. It was mentioned to, it was mentioned to the committee. So, uh, please, your, yes.
Chairman, I have a concern. And if the counsel to the Finance Minister can give me his ear. The counsel to the Finance Minister, I don't know if you heard him. He's been telling us that the Finance Minister has work to do. He has to lead IMF negotiations, prepare the budget, as though what is going on here is not important. Some of us take strong, strong exception. This is an important constitutional assignment, very important to Parliament and to the Ghanaian people. I, I think that such, such expressions, with all due respect, very condescending. And as though, as though we are wasting their time, totally unacceptable.
Do I think that that comment was posited in a specific contest? I thought what it meant was that by maybe suggesting that we should go on the front leg of their, their own to look for all this, why not stick us to the specifics? But we pointed it out to him that.
No, Mister Chairman, this is a very important national exercise.
Can I conclude? Yes, he thought that you directing him to go out of the box, out of the contest. But we think we indicated to him that we wrote it down, I have it as a number five. So maybe if it is submitted on this, we pointed out to him that it is.
Yeah, he, he, he has a valid point, but to add that, you know, they have an IMF negotiations and budget. As if, as if what's happening here is some secrets, without due respect.
If it was, it was against them to them that go out and look for this, look for this, look for that, and he's against it, it might take time over the IMF. Let, let, let's, it's all right, we can, we can, we can allow, we can allow.
No, Mister Chairman, he must withhold that. This is a very important exercise. No, 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 I, I take strong exception to that, Mister Chairman.
Well, I think, I think, I think the honorable member has a very legitimate point. Uh, that has been made with respect to the importance of this exercise, that, um, this is a constitutional exercise, a referral from the, the Speaker of Parliament. Uh, then the entire country, Ghanaian people expect us to return a report to Mr. Speaker with respect to the grounds stipulated in the motion for the Honorable House to debate and to take a decision. And this is so important that we cannot, uh, you know, I mean, we seem to be trivializing it. So that is a very legitimate point. Um, yes, honorable member.
Without, without due respect to the chair, I do not think that what the counsel for the Finance Minister said is in any way condescending. Obviously, the statement that he made was clearly in context. Okay, you've sent the man with a letter that says that he should come and respond to seven specific items. One, despicable conflict of interest, ensuring.
Honorable, honorable member, you don't, you don't need, even, no, no, you don't, you don't need to go through all the several grounds, no. Honorable, honorable member.
But let me, let me make my point. And, and so if he appears before you and request that these grounds that you've listed and submitted to him by letter does not disclose any specific allegations of facts for him to respond. And then all of a sudden, he's been given a list, which in my view does not relate to any fact whatsoever. which in my view does not relate to any fact whatsoever. And he's being called upon to...
Honorable Member, please, you are, you are prejudging, you are prejudging the content. You are, no, 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 you are prejudging the content. Please, Honorable Member, you are, you are, you are, you are out of order. You are prejudging the content of the documents we submitted. Okay, no, no, Honorable Member, you are out of order. Can we, can we, can we listen, no, Honorable Minority Leader, can we listen to the Honorable Atu Fosin? Eh, Counsel, thank you very much. You, you can, if you want to be conferring with your client, eh, why don't you bring your client eh... Which one?
Condescending, no, 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 Mr. Chairman. No, Mr. Chairman, no, no.
Yeah.
Please, you, you, Coach, you were not, you were not happy with an expression I used. And I, and I, and I did what gentlemen do.
I, I, no, no, I, I'm taking the, the, the time to explain. As far as I'm concerned, the statement was made in a specific contest. You, you've given me a list to go through. My view, and eh, when I say my, I'm now putting on the shoe of eh, the, of counsel on the other side.
So Chair, you can make that point without talking about the more important things you have to...
No, no, what, no, no, no. So if you say that you throw all this at me and you expect that, what you also know very well that I've got A, B, C, D to do, well, bank this and this and that. I eh, Mr. Mr. Atu Fosin, eh, is it difficult for you to rephrase it?
Oh, not at all, not at all. Um, this is an important exercise. And we're only asking for direction so that we can finish it on time. That's all.
I mean, that's what I said, okay, eh, Atu.
Um, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Chairman, I will be um, concentrating on mo, um, item four of the motion five, six and seven. Ground four, five, six and seven, that's my job today. So I, I will, I will, I will take you through one by one.
Honorable Atu Fosin.
Chairman, for, I've set the tone. I'll come back on every single issue. That's why I tended my motion in evidence. I'll pick paragraph by paragraph, expand it and provide needed material evidence. But I yield now to those other grounds.
Arun, I mean, you, you are confusing this me, this, this committee. I thought you decided to take on the first one.
Yes, I have.
Now, but you seems to be saying, yes, and you come back to them.
No, the Honorable Atu Fosin will speak to the grounds he's mentioned.
Uh-huh. And then what?
At any time you need me, I'll come.
What, we need you?
Yeah.
That's fair, I thought you of your own volition was going to force yourself back on us again.
I've just ended in my motion in evidence, you haven't stated it yet. E-study will provide you an opportunity to...
For us to call you if we want to, if we need you. Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, if we need you, if we don't need you, we will say good afternoon to you.
The Honorable Atu Fosin, Mr. Chairman, um, to start with, I'll, I'll start with item four, where we have here written deliberate and dishonest misreporting of economic data to Parliament. Um, Mr. Chairman, you, we all are aware. And we have seen that since twenty eighteen, government since twenty eighteen has been misreporting economic data to Parliament with the aim of misleading Parliament and investor community. The misreporting to Parliament was mainly to inform Parliament that the Finance Minister has complied with the Fiscal Responsibility Act, Act twenty eighteen, Act eh, Act nine eight two, particularly section seven, when that was not the case. Mr. Chairman, if I may refer you to the eh, section four, section four. But Chairman, if I may refer you to the Fiscal Responsibility Act twenty eighteen, Act eight, nine eight two, Act nine eight two. So Chairman, um, the section one of the Fiscal Responsibility Act eh, which deals with the object of the act is clear. It says that the object of this act is to provide for fiscal responsibility rules and to ensure macroeconomic stability and debt sustainability. One, two says that for the purposes of section one, fiscal responsibility rules shall, A, correct distorted incentives, B, ensure fiscal discipline, C, prevent fiscal slippages, and D, improve fiscal and debt sustainability. So Chairman, today our debt is unsustainable. And the key question everyone else is asking is that how could we have a fiscal responsibility act? What set of rules? And yet our debt has become unsustainable. So I will take you through why we are where we are. So Chairman, the fiscal responsibility rule says that despite the fiscal policy indicators stated in section sixteen of the Public Financial Management Act twenty sixteen, Act nine two one, the following numerical fiscal responsibility rules shall apply in the management of the public finances. So Chairman, A, the overall fiscal balance on cash basis for a particular year shall not exceed a deficit of five percent of gross domestic product for that year. And B, an amount, an annual positive primary balance shall be maintained. So Chairman, this is clearly the fiscal responsibility rules for the Republic of Ghana. Section four of the Fiscal Responsibility Act, Act nine eight two says that Parliament may, in accordance with Article nine, Article eighty-two of the Constitution, pass a vote of censure on the minister where the minister breaches section two of more than one percentage point. So Chairman, section two says that the fiscal responsibility rules should not be more than five percent. So one percentage point in addition will mean you, any time you exceed it by six percent, a vote of censure may be presented to Parliament or somebody may trigger the vote of censure on you, may. So Chairman, again, section two says that the primary balance must always be positive. So if you breach it by one percentage point, then obviously the vote of censure may trigger. What we have seen, what we have seen is that over the years, even though the Minister responsible for Finance has been presenting some economic data to Parliament. In the year twenty eighteen, so Chairman, you can see it on the board, our Minister responsible for Finance and the government have said to Parliament that the fiscal deficit was three point nine percent of GDP. In fact, in the year twenty eighteen, the reason why they said is three point nine percent of GDP was that a key expenditure worth eight point, nine point eight billion Ghana cedis was excluded from the fiscal accounting. They were treat, they treated it below the line. And this has to do with the financial sector payment. So Chairman, fiscal deficit symbol means when your expenditure exceeds your revenue, exceeds your revenue, then you throw out the fiscal deficit. And the law says that any time you reach six percent, the vote of censure must happen. And this law was assented by His Excellency the President on twenty eighth December twenty eighteen. So, Mr. Chairman, if you are to account for the nine point eight billion Ghana cedis that they excluded and treated it below the line, the actual fiscal deficit for the year twenty eighteen was seven point one percent of GDP. Clearly means that the censorship motion in line with eh, section, section four of Act nine eight two triggers. And this is exactly three days after the law was assented to by the President. And the law, Mr. Chairman, has no transitional provision. So, so three days, three days. Eh, the, the law was passed on the twenty eighth of December twenty eighteen. And by December thirty-first twenty eighteen, the minister has breached the fiscal responsibility rules already. So three days down the line. So Chairman, if I take you to twenty nineteen also, our minister had informed Parliament that fiscal deficit was four point eight percent of GDP, four point eight percent. Again, he had excluded financial sector payment of three point one percent, eh, three point one billion Ghana cedis. And also had excluded energy payment, energy payment of five point one, eh, five point one billion Ghana cedis from the fiscal accounting, from the fiscal accounting. So if you are to factor in all of that, the fiscal deficit is actually seven point one percent of GDP, same as twenty eighteen. At the time, the fiscal rules had not been suspended, had not been suspended. And remember, the fiscal rules was suspended in the year twenty twenty, when Covid came to our doorsteps. So at that point, the minister again breached the Fiscal Responsibility Act, particularly, particularly, section two and section four of the Fiscal Responsibility Act. So Chairman, eh, in the year twenty twenty, the deficit was eleven point seven, he claims. But the actual deficit as reported, if you factor in all what they have excluded, is seventeen point two b eh, percent of GDP. The year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, the fiscal deficit as reported to Parliament was nine point two percent of GDP. But the actual fiscal deficit for twenty twenty-one was twelve point four percent of GDP. So Chairman, let me take you to this energy payment. The minister...
Back to the minister before he continue, with twenty twenty, he came for suspension of the act. But want you to follow the chronology of events. There were years he says, I'm suspending fiscal responsibility act because of the circumstance of the situation.
So, Mr. Chairman, he could legally do that?
Yes, in fact, eh, section three, section three of the Fiscal Responsibility Act is under suspension of the fiscal responsibility rules. And so he could suspend it, he did not suspend it in eighteen, did not suspend it in the year twenty nineteen, but suspended it in the year twenty twenty. And there are circumstances that we can suspend it. So he used Covid and suspended that, we all agree. But prior to that, he did not suspend the fiscal responsibility rule. So he fell and was in breach of the Fiscal Responsibility Act. So Chairman, um, as I said, the minister excluded the following payment, and this was given to us at the Finance Committee from the fiscal accounting. And this is summary of twenty nineteen energy sector payment against supplementary operations. So Chairman, this is a document from the Ministry of Finance that they gave to us. The eh, I have the documents here and I'm tendering it, um, obviously as the ranking member of the committee. So I have a copy, I will tender it to you, but I'm referring to the whole document. So when I finish, I'll give it to you. So Chairman, in the document before us, the document before us.
Chairman, eh, could we start labeling this as evidence?
Yes.
Yeah, so, yes, you're doing that for some...
Yes, eh, 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 Chairman, they made certain payment worth five point one billion Ghana cedis. Energy payment. Eh, first to Ameri Energy, an amount of five hundred and twenty million. Second to Litasko, Litasko, five hundred million. AXA Energy, three hundred and fifty-nine. Carpower, million, everything is a million. Carpower, six hundred and fifty-six. You have Solana Softway, five hundred and eight, nineteen million. And then TMG Trusties Limited eh, which is fuel from ENI Vito, eh, amounting to one billion and eight hundred and sixty million. And then the Pichtracom Energy, six hundred and thirty-one million. GNPC, for twenty eighteen refund for heavy fuel oil, an amount of eighty-six point four million. So Speaker, eh, Mr. Chairman, this gives you a total of five point one billion Ghana cedis. All of this were treated below the line. Simple put, they did not include it in the expenditure to see the overall deficit for the period. So Chairman...
What, what do you refer with me? Can you help the committee by indicating what these particular um, power eh, companies, power, no, generators? Let's eh, what were they um, um, installed? What were they installed in the country?
Mr. Chairman, eh, my job is not to know what they installed, but I know the government of Ghana paid this money and treated it as amortization.
It's fine, eh, but it would have helped us our...
Okay, Mr. Chairman, just to let you know that some, most of them there are for the purposes of buying fuel and to power the power plant. For example, the amount that was paid to Litasko is fewer.
Come now, Atu, what I'm saying is that, you say it's not your job, but I'm just wondering, if you could posit it properly, yes, you are concerned with the figures. I sitting here, I'm interested in when this eh, equipment eh, were installed in the country. If you have no idea, that's fine.
I have no idea, I have no idea, yeah. And, and to be fair to the Honorable Atu Fosin, the um, evidence being presented relates to payments that were made at a specific point in time.
I appreciate that, but my question was simply if he knew when this machin, machinery um, were installed. Eh, if you don't know, eh, that's fine. I, I thought some of them, most of them were installed at the time when he was a Deputy Minister, but that...
Mr. Chairman, I, 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 I'm not an I P P S...
It's by the by, you don't worry.
Eh, I deal with numbers, I'm giving you the numbers.
And the payments were not made at the time he was Deputy Minister?
Mr. Chairman, these payments were made in the year twenty nineteen, eh, so many years after I left the Ministry of Finance. This was actually made by this...
You had installed those eh, machinery, didn't you?
So, Mr. Chairman, um, to take you through it. Um, obviously, this was excluded to create impression that the Minister responsible for Finance had actually met the fiscal responsibility rules. So, Mr. Chairman, let me now refer you...
Honorable Atu Fosin, you may want to eh...
No, I, I still need the document.
You still need it.
Eh, I still need it, I, I would tender it, I have tendered the energy sector payment twenty nineteen in evidence. But I have, I still need the, okay, maybe I can tear it and give it to you.
No, no, if, if you want to, if you want to tender it in whole, that is fine.
I will tell you after you have finished presenting to you in evidence. So Chairman, the um, next point had to do the same misreporting to Parliament. I have with me the Article nine, Article four consultation report from the International Monetary Fund, the IMF, dated December twenty nineteen. And, Mr. Chairman, let me refer you to paragraph sixteen.
Wait, wait, before you do, what, what is that, what is that?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, um, Ghana is a member of the International Monetary Fund. Every country IMF, every country that happens to be a member of the International Monetary Fund has to open their books once a year to the IMF to see the reporting of how the country's economy is going. Because, eh, eh, Chairman, the truth is, we're in a global world. If care is not taken and you allow a country's economy to crash, it will become a global issue for global community to take care of that particular company eh, eh, country. And so the IMF, per their mandate, as given to them by the United Nations, is to ensure that once a year, they visit countries that are members. And I, I'm, I'm, I'm sure that every country is a member of the IMF. And then you, they will come and see your books and report appropriately. This report has to go through the IMF four, eh, IMF Board for approval. So, Mr. Chairman, in the year twenty nineteen, the IMF undertook an Article four mission in Ghana. And as part of the document that they publish on their website, and I've sent the link to this website to the clerk, I provided a link to the clerk. So Chairman, paragraph sixteen, paragraph sixteen, page eleven, page eleven, paragraph sixteen of the staff report, um, uh, and Article four says, fiscal rules eh, under Ghana Public Financial Management Act. Fiscal rules could be strengthened, box one. It goes on to say that about two point eight percentage point of GDP in financial and energy sector payments were recorded below the line in the year twenty nineteen budget. Because the government considers the financial sector costs as one-off and energy cost as debt amortization. Best international practices would include this transaction above the line. Best international practices would include these transactions above the line as they reflect either direct government obligation or government transactions transfers to state-owned enterprises. In addition, spending on roads into bracket cocoa board and potential infrastructure collateralization on oxide export, silo hydro should be recorded in the central government budget. Finally, a format debt ankle targeted as sustainable debt to GDP ratio over the medium term could effectively guide the fiscal policy and reduce uncertainty about the debt trajectory. So Chairman, the point...
So we get the notes right. Um, the IMF is not by that saying that it was wrong what they did. They said that best international practices would have ensured that it was done in a different way. But it has not said what they, what that was wrong.
Right, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm coming there, I, I, I'm, I'm building a point, so allow me to finish. When I got my point, you, you understand where I'm coming from. So, Mr. Chairman, this is the point that the IMF made in the twenty nineteen Article four consultation.
You come back there, you haven't answered my question.
No, no, I'm, I'm building a point, so let me finish and I'm sure when I'm done, you can. If you want to close the session, let me... If you want to close the sound with me, you can, but I just want so that I don't lose my thoughts. So, Mr Chairman, the.
Don't worry if you lose a bit of it.
Mr Chairman, the key point here is that an expenditure worth two point eight percent of GDP was excluded from the fiscal reporting because government treated it differently, treated it differently against the international best practices. The Chairman, a expenditure of two point eight percent. So, Mr Chairman, if you are to factor that expenditure in, clearly the fiscal rules was breached. The Chairman, the other point, the other point had to do with the fact that. Certain payments.
Did you say two point eight percent of GDP?
Of GDP.
Yeah, of GDP.
And I've given you the nominal numbers of GDP. The Chairman, the key point also is that silo hydro payment was also excluded from the fiscal reporting, government treated it differently. And so even though the silo hydro payment is due for payment, the debt repayment is due next year. Now, because of the way they treated it as if it's not part of central government debt, how are we going to service the debt? Because already not part. And if you use taxpayers' money to service it, the accounting will mean that you have not recorded expenditure and now you are paying for something that you have not recorded. Clearly, this is dishonest, and we believe that this shouldn't be the case. Mr Chairman, after twenty nineteen, in the year twenty twenty, in the year twenty twenty, government of Ghana had gone to the IMF to get some loan. And the loan is called the Rapid Credit Facility, Rapid Credit Facility. And under the Rapid Credit Facility, before you go to the IMF, you have to give them the economic data. And I refer you to page three, page three of the Rapid Credit Facility document at the IMF website, at the IMF website. And page three, there is a box there called table one, table one. The government of Ghana gave this document to IMF, the source is Ghana Government Authorities. So Chairman, government has said to IMF that in the year twenty eighteen, the fiscal deficit was seven percent and not four point eight percent as they told us. So in one bread, they had said to government, the Parliament of Ghana, that is four point eight percent. In another bread, in government official document, they said to us that the fiscal deficit, they said to IMF, the fiscal deficit overall deficit was seven percent of GDP. Acknowledging that the energy payment and financial sector payment were expenditure. So Chairman, in the year twenty nineteen, they had informed IMF again in the Rapid Credit Facility that the fiscal deficit is seven point five percent of GDP. Seven point five percent of GDP, reaching the fiscal responsibility rules. This is what they gave, Mr Chairman, I tender this in evidence, tender this in evidence, and then the twenty nineteen one. Now, I will take you to twenty twenty staff report, twenty twenty one staff report. The twenty twenty one staff report, staff, IMF staff report also acknowledges that the fiscal deficit for twenty eighteen was seven percent. The fiscal deficit for twenty twenty one is seven point five percent. So clearly, the fiscal responsibility rules were breached in the year twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. So if you ask me, the Honorable Atufosin, you've referred to two separate documents.
Yes.
Would you want to tender them in evidence?
Yes, I'm tendering all of them in evidence.
Okay, so let them be tended to the clerk of the committee. Yes, Honorable Patigwama. Mr Chairman, I'm not done.
No, I think he has.
I think it's very important to have those documents well numbered because the way, the way he's speaking and tendering in document, we need to have a clear view of what he's tendering.
The clerk was taking charge of that, yes, you have submitted them properly, Mr Clerk.
Okay, so, we didn't hear you, Mr Clerk.
So you can allay his fears?
So, Mr Chairman, the twenty twenty one article four consultation document from the IMF, also, in page three, page three of the document also made this point very clear that the fiscal deficit for the year twenty nineteen was seven point five percent of GDP. And the primary balance is seven point, negative, is seven point five percent of GDP and not as reported by the minister responsible for finance to Parliament, representing four point eight percent of GDP. So clearly, it was breached. The Chairman, the second fiscal rule has to do the primary balance. We were told that under the rules, if you exceed the deficit, the balance by one percent, because it's supposed to be positive at all times. Under the document that is submitted to IMF, the primary balance was negative one point, negative one point eight. So there was a deficit of one point eight. And that is why we are saying that the train for the censorship motion moved in the year twenty eighteen. In fact, if we are to go by it, somebody could have brought the motion to censor the minister in the year twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen because he breached the rules. And to my surprise, these are rules that were set by the minister himself when this bill, he brought the bill to Parliament, for a reason. The reason is to ensure fiscal sustainability and debt sustainability. If you breach these rules, it has long-term repercussion on the Ghanaian economy. And today, we are seeing what is happening. The Chairman, I tender this one to in evidence, I tender this one to in evidence. Chairman, I have said.
You say, Mr Coach, you see our handicap, even those of us here, you see our handicap. You tell about the law, you tell us about the provisions, we have no.
No, I have copies of the law I can give to you, I can give you copies of the law.
So that's the point that council for the finance minister raised originally. If we had acceded to that, everybody would have copies of what we're talking about. So we'll be able to put you on the spot if you are giving us a bit of tips.
The item on motion, on the motion item five deals with fiscal recklessness.
So the Honorable Atufosin, you finish with.
I'm done with item four.
With item four.
Item four.
So you are now moving to item.
Item five.
Item five.
But, Mr Coach, I think we should stick to the original plan. Our colleagues want to ask questions, you put all of them together, I think they might lose their train of thought.
Okay, so if you can ask questions on item, item four, and then I move on to.
I think that's a better way of going about it, yes.
Very well. The Honorable Minister.
Chairman, thank you very much for the opportunity. I want to find out from the honorable ranking member whether he knows Dr Albert Tuna Mama.
Of course, Albert Tuna Mama works, used to work with the IMF in this country as the resident representative. So he's an IMF staff that often meets a finance committee.
Chairman, I want to find out from the ranking member again whether he's aware that on the ninth of May twenty twenty, all these allegations that he's recounted were flatly denied by the said Dr Albert Tuma Mama on Joy News file.
Mr Chairman, I am making reference to documents published by the IMF Board, official document. Tuna Mama is not the IMF Board, he's not IMF, he's an individual who works with IMF. His views are his views. I am, my references are official document from the IMF, and you can get it from the IMF website. I'm not aware that IMF website is stronger than Joy News website.
Mr Coach, Chairman, no, let's, let's get to it. He asked a straightforward question, are you aware, A, B, C, D, S or no? I think that's all he was asking for. No, that wasn't his question. His question was, are you aware that Mr Ture Mama, whatever he is there, made this? Did you, have you?
Mr Chairman, I am not aware.
Thank you.
Mr Chairman, indeed, they said Mr Dr Tuma Mama was the IMF country rep for Ghana. And he was called on news file to respond to allegations that have been made by the honorable ranking member and the minority with respect to misreporting of figures that the finance ministry had presented to the IMF. And he was categorical that all the figures that the minority were alluding to were known to the IMF and that the government of Ghana had not represented any figures to the IMF as he's alleging today.
Mr Chairman, I vehemently disagree with what he put out there. Globally, 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 countries report on the fiscal with a manual. So Chairman, I will share the manual with you, and I think I have a copy with the manual, I brought a copy. I'll give you the manual. And the manual indicates how countries deals with their, deals with the issues of debt reporting or fiscal reporting. Mr Chairman, in the case of currently, the world is using Government Finance Statistics Manual twenty fourteen. Government Finance Statistics Manual twenty fourteen. And this manual is not alien to government of Ghana. Ghana has been reporting our fiscal in line with this manual since Adam. I'm surprised that all of a sudden, the reporting has changed to something that is not globally accepted. And that is why the IMF in their own document had said that best practices recognize that this should be treated above the line. And this is in line with the manual. Mr Chairman, I shared the manual, it's a very bulky document. Since we are now in paperless reading, I don't want to waste money and print it. So, Mr Chairman, I will share the soft copy with your clerk now. This is a document that deals with how reporting should be. It is not for someone to show us how reporting should be. It is a global manual, and everybody abides by that.
We have copies of the transcript, we'll be giving another opportunity to.
Look, and of course, obviously, the finance minister is also here with his lawyers, so obviously, yeah, listen.
Thank you, I'll leave it there for now. Yeah, I'll leave it there for you.
The Honorable Kwame, you may do.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Honorable Atufosin, would you be kind enough to turn to the paragraph before this one? Yeah, by what, I want to find out what is the source of this document?
If you may, I have the budget statement before me, so I'll take you through the budget statement one by one and refer you to the budget statement, where the source is coming from. Mr Chairman, to start with, let me start with the twenty eighteen budget statement.
Is this an extract from the budget and which year's budget?
Okay, every single ten, every single data is coming from government official document, coming from budget statement. And, Mr Chairman, you agree with me that when I said fiscal data from the Ministry of Finance website? So whilst we are here, I have access to internet, I can take you to Ministry of Finance website now and point to where all these numbers are, where I picked them from. So we can do that right away, and you can know exactly where it's coming from.
You with a question, on the topic of ahead, without taking us through the tone you are talking about. Are you able to tell us twenty eighteen, two eleven point whatever, twenty one nine whatever? Are you able to tell us, this is from here, this is from here? If you can't, that's okay, can you tell us?
Yeah, I can, the deficit as reported in the year eleven point six, at three point nine is in the twenty nineteen budget and the media review of twenty nineteen. If you are to look at the appendix three C and two C of the budget statement of twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen media review and the budget, these numbers are there for everybody to see, appendix two C and three C of the budget statement. Again, the financial sector.
Who is, who should finish first?
Question that I asked, is this data something that Arabo Atufosin had prepared? Or it is already part of an existing official document? That's what I want to find out. I asked the question because you actually colored some places with red and white noise. And you are using this document to contradict the finance minister's position. So we must know the source of this document, whether it's coming from you or it's an official document. That's why.
Um, to start with, these documents are official numbers published by the government of Ghana. All what I did was to take those numbers and represent them in a manner for everyone to.
So this is your document?
So it is, it is my presentation. But the document, the numbers are coming from government official document. And I've made reference to the budget statement, appendix three C and two C of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. And you can check them, I have copies of the budget statement here. If you want me to take you through, I will take you through. And you can also find these numbers in the Ministry, on the Ministry of Finance website, under fiscal data. Every year data is published by the state and is there for everyone to see. So that is where I took the numbers from, and these are official numbers. The ones that I have colored is to show clearly that what the government of Ghana reported and the red to show what they should have reported. Because, for example, the energy payment, they treated it as amortization. Amortization simple means debt repayment. How could you repay a debt and this debt where this? That's supposed to reduce your debt.
Wait a minute, it's a point where did these numbers come from? I think he is quite happy with that.
I think I'm happy to hear from you that they are your numbers, even though you extracted them from other documents. That's, that's it, that's the answer I got from him. If you would want to.
Let's be fair with our colleague, I'm not sure that's the point he's making. He's saying that.
He says that these documents are his presentation and that he had extracted the numbers from other documents.
Well, I guess what is important, what is important is that he says these numbers, though are presented here by him, are not his numbers. They said the money from official, well, what is a borrow? He extracted them from government documents. I think he's got the documents over there, he referred us to those.
So also for your information, also for your information before he comes in, also for your information, the government says twenty twenty two budget, and that's before me, and the twenty twenty two media review, and let me refer you to twenty twenty two budget, appendix two C of the twenty twenty two budget, appendix two C of the twenty twenty two budget.
The appendix two C, two.
Yes, three C.
And three C.
Those are all from twenty twenty two, and yes.
Yes. Mr Chairman, appendix two C of the twenty twenty two budget, page two hundred and thirty four, page two hundred and thirty four, under other, under other expenditures. Governments had said that going forward from twenty twenty two, they are treating all energy payment and financial sector payment above the line, adding it to expenditure. Considering that what they did was wrong and going further, going forward, they are going to.
But that's your clause, tell us, that's your clause, tell us what is there.
Mr Chairman, what is here is that they have treated energy payment, energy payment of four point four billion and twenty four million as a expenditure. The same energy payment, once upon a time, they said it's not a expenditure and they should treat it as amortization. They have changed their position, moved it from amortization now to expenditure. After we raised the issue, now they are saying that they are going to conduct.
That's what you.
No, honorable members, to be fair to the witness, we would have an opportunity to evaluate the evidence presented. We should not, as a committee, be asking questions that sound as if we are bugging the witness. We should, we should ask questions arising out of the presentation in a manner that elicits the information for our evaluation as evidence before the committee. Honorable Kwame, you may do.
He is laughing because, yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
Of the sponsors of this motion, you are part of the sponsors of the motion.
You are accusing, you are accusing my friend of.
It's a few minutes.
You're accusing, you're accusing of what? Of what?
We should be very careful.
Drop that, drop that, yeah.
Mr Chairman, I ask the questions to understand him better.
I appreciate that.
You actually make, I don't want to, I want to refrain from using the word allegation and by your choice of words, what was it? That the grounds that you are making and the grounds you are making.
Why not, why not go on with the next question?
Okay, Mr Chairman, I will do that, but again, you also say that the finance minister exceeded. But again, you also say that the finance minister exceeded, um, the fiscal deficit by two point eight of the, of two point eight percentage for his of the GDP. And your grounds for saying that, where do you have the figures? Or is there any official figure that shows that the finance minister had actually exceeded it by two point eight?
Okay, thank you, Mr Chairman. Uh, if I may refer you to the documents before us. In the budget statement, if you look at appendix three C, the same budget statement, the same budget statement, appendix three C, which year are you making reference, 2019? Okay, so which one is that? Uh, Mr Chairman, first of all, to, 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 to start with, in the 2019 budget, the minister had reported to us in paragraph ninety nine, page twenty three, that the fiscal deficit is three point seven percent of GDP for the year 2018. This is according to the minister's document. Mr Chairman, if you go to the same budget statement, the budget statement, the energy sector payment, instead of him treating it above the line, what he did was, he showed it below the line, clearly excluding it from the expenditure. So an amount of nine point eight billion Ghana...
That, that isn't his question. You've taken us through all of that already.
Yes.
There was a point where you said that there was some two point eight percent, uh...
Of, of, of GDP, that's why I'm, that, that is where I'm going. For example, uh, in the year 2019, 2019, the minister had reported to parliament that the fiscal deficit is four point eight percent of GDP. The IMF had said that, per their standards, the world standard, the fiscal deficit is supposed to be seven point five percent of GDP. In the staff report, they had said it, said to us that two point eight percent of GDP were excluded from the expenditure. When they asked the government, the government treated them differently. One, he treated the energy payment as amortization, debt repayment, but it's not debt repayment. It's an expenditure.
Where, in which document are you getting it from?
So the document is the budget statement.
Okay.
It is in the budget statement, appendix two B, uh, two C and three C.
Okay.
Under below the line expenditure, the amount is there clearly.
That's fine.
And nobody can run away from it. So if you want me to point the numbers to him, I can point them to him if he has a copy of the budget statement.
You're right. Yeah, go on.
So your last question and then we can move to the next, honorable member.
To three questions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr Chairman, preliminary objection to the way this committee is conducting business. We are open to cross examination and you can evaluate the evidence we are submitting to you. But let this committee be reminded of the excerpt words in article eighty two four. It says, states and I quote, "A minister of state, in respect of whom a vote of senior is debated under clause three of this article, is entitled during the debate to be heard in his defense." The motion we move is not against any member of this committee. So we expect him to hear and defend himself. If this committee is reducing itself to doing that, let us know.
Wait a minute, reducing itself to doing what?
I'm just reminding the committee of articulated two four...
Wait a minute, this committee is reduced, Aaron, this committee is reducing itself to doing what? No, no, we didn't hear you. It wasn't clear. Aaron, behave yourself. What if you, what is that? Aaron, I will overruge you there. So your next question.
Mr Chairman, uh, Arabo Atufosin, kindly permit me, I'm not an accountant, neither am I a finance person. But you suggest that the minister, improving your point, you are saying that there were some reports that the minister had reported above the line and then he actually brought it below the line. I think you said, instead of being above the line, he brought it below the line. Right. I may want you to explain that, but the question that I want to ask is that, does it necessarily propose, suggest that the minister is dishonest if an item is reported below the line?
Thank you very much. I think I, I, I think you have, you have really asked a very good question. Um, Mr Chairman, the key point here is, these statistics are there for a reason. The reason is you don't add to the debt unnecessarily or you don't add to the debt at levels that the country will see debt overhang. Our problem today is as a result of high debt, nothing more. That has triggered everything else. What I've done here is to track how this debt became debt, the fiscal part. When the minister, if the minister had been honest with us, by showing us what the fiscal deficit was, I'm sure Ghana would have remedied the situation long ago. The problems we are...
The question of honesty and dishonestness.
Mr Chairman, he, he asked me a question about honesty and I'm, 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 I have to answer.
All right.
So I'm answering his question. So, so we are where we are because he was not upright with us.
Sami, you wanted to ask a question, get over with.
Chairman, my question has not been answered.
Um, I thought...
I could be kind enough. What I want to find out, he would want the committee to believe that instead of going above the line, it has come below the line. And I'm asking whether it suggests that the minister is being dishonest? Is it the guideline of the IMF that should be used at all levels?
Mr Chairman...
You want a yes or no answer from you?
Let, let me answer this question before, Mr Chairman, let, let me, come in.
The, 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 the chairman decided for you to, the minority leader, he can't yield to you.
Chairman, uh...
Oh, you're taking it to yourself. You're you're there to yourself.
Honorable Ayebe Do had to take it. Thank you.
Right, Mr Chairman. That statistics are there for a reason. That is why we have a law called fiscal responsibility.
So I think you are not being fair to him.
No, Mr Chairman, I asked the question.
That he's been honest or dishonest. Why can't you do...
Mr Chairman, I have to build a point. And my point is that, yes, he has been dishonest.
Full stop, let's go.
He has been dishonest because it would have triggered the fiscal responsibility as section four. It would have been...
He will speak for himself, so...
Uh, Chairman, just on the same question, to answer the honorable Ayebe Do. Probably even in the course of the honorable Atu's submission, he stated without any ambiguity that international best practice. Indeed, the chairman even had to paraphrase him and ask whether this is international best practice. So this is our position. For instance, Chairman, I yield again to Atu. I'm holding the PIAC newsletter, key lessons after ten years of Petroleum Revenue Management Act. And then if you come to findings, Chairman, this significant, it stays. For the first time since Ghana started receiving petroleum revenue in 2011...
See the particular page that we can make those over?
Yes, uh, PIAC newsletter.
Year and, uh, page?
PIAC newsletter issue two, this is July to December 2022. So the media...
Your friends also seem to have copies, except for those of us who are not your friends.
No, I'll give you a copy. You know that, you know that you remain a friend. It stays and I, for the first time since Ghana started receiving petroleum revenue in 2011, the Assembly of Common Fund received an amount of thirty two point three eight billion. Following the 2019 decision of the Supreme Court, in the case of Udo and Ayeni versus the Attorney General, they didn't add Ayeni though. However, the dispatchman made was one hundred seventy four percent of the ADFA, one point seven four percent, one point seven four percent, instead of the five percent specified in the Supreme Court ruling. Another discrepancy that you should take note would lead evidence to it. And the jubilee report and again in the PIAC report of the hundred million US dollars, which is meant for jubilee, which is in an offshore account, are lead evidence to provide that when he got approval to be able to do that. Because in the subsidiaries of GMPC, which was in your committee's report, you never added jubilee holding as a subsidiary. Atu, continue. Thank you, Chair. Would you indulge us?
I, I think he has answered the question. Uh, honorable here, you, you, you have your hand up.
Mr Chairman, thank you for the opportunity. Uh, leader and the proponent, you have quoted from the PIAC reports. The PIAC report is not in evidence. Would you want to tender it in evidence?
We said so. We said so. We said so.
Because of the numbering...
We will say so and we submit to in evidence. Thank you. Atu, continue.
Okay, um, Mr Chairman, yes, counsel.
On the list, there's no PIAC report. This is a PIAC newsletter. Once again, we are extending the fishing net. I think we should, we should bear this in mind.
That's noted. Thank you. Who tendered the actual PIAC report?
Yes.
The same thing is...
Um, I, I think, you know, for the benefit of the efficient discharge of our, you know, functions as a committee, um, since you and the honorable minister are here, uh, maybe you should take down a list of documents that have been omitted and then we can make, we can make an order for them to be supplied at the close of, um, of the hearing. Because you will have an opportunity...
That is exactly the point that we are revisiting.
No.
Consistently, they are saying that this will lead us to a world whose chase.
Right.
Consistently, that's the point you are making.
Yes, but we, 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 uh, arrived at a consensus that they should sit in, listen, and then be able to respond afterwards.
But wait a minute, let me clarify with Aaron. Did you say that this is replicated in the other one or that one is replicated in this?
Yes, this paragraph is about the same wording, even in the PIAC report itself.
Yeah.
I therefore will submit same in evidence. I thank you, Chair.
You submit which one in evidence, this or the PIAC report proper?
The PIAC report proper.
So let's check the PIAC report and take this one out.
Mr Chairman, I'm not sure that you want to determine how I think.
Well, no, because counsel is trying to objecting to our presentation of the documentation.
This is a document I'm referring to, PIAC newsletter. I said so. In the evidence of what I will rely on, without any contradiction, I say I'll rely on the PIAC report. Thank you.
You, you said two things. You see, you, you said we are directing you on which one to choose against the other. But so far, I'm not so sure. No, no, well, counsel made a point and we thought we were supporting it. So what is it that, yeah, so now what we are, we are, which one do we put in evidence? The PIAC report?
The paper I submitted to is already in evidence.
What have you submitted?
So this is additional to the list of, you asked me the first primary question, what do you intend to rely on?
Sure.
So read it.
So what, you mean the paper, the list?
Yes, it's already in evidence.
Talking about the paper like this one?
I've just quoted a paragraph in the newsletter, which is paraphrased from the PIAC report.
And that's helpful. So I'm suggesting that we can, because his objection is to the introduction of this new one. So if you say it is in the PIAC report, we are happy to rely on the PIAC report and then, um, uh, ma- ma- make some progress. Make note of where in the PIAC report that we get this particular passage that you, you read or whatever it is that...
Chairman, I'll do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, as I understand him, that this will be, will not be part of it, it will be excluded.
Yes.
Okay.
So, so, Mr Chairman, um, to conclude on my first point, um, the, my matter is that our minister responsible for finance misled parliament...
Wait, wait a minute, which one is it? You are concluding on which one?
On, on item four. I thought you completed it. That is why the...
Yes, but you asked some questions, so I had to submit four places.
I think Sammy has got some questions for, for you.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make my opening, uh, my closing mark on that one. So if he, if he has a point, he can...
Yeah, thank you very much, Chairman. The publication that the honorable Eja Palmesa referred to, I have, uh, an extract here, still on the website of Ghana Web, dated ninth May 2020. The interview of Dr Albert Tunamama to the Joy FM Program News File. For our record, Chairman, the report states, under fiscal deficit, the IMF country director said the IMF and the government of Ghana have different views on the calculation of fiscal deficit and they have agreed to disagree on it. He said, while the IMF calculates fiscal deficit with the financial sector costs and energy sector costs, the government argues strongly that the fiscal deficit ought to be calculated without the financial sector costs and energy sector costs. The IMF country director therefore revealed that the seven point five fiscal deficit for 2019, in their statement, including the financial sector payments and energy sector payments, while the four point five in the 2019 budget does not include the financial sector and energy sector payments. The comparison that I see is comparing two different things on one side and we are aware of the differences, he said in the interview. So I just want to place on record that it is erroneous for the impression to be created that the IMF country director has discounted or dispelled the very eloquent and forceful submission of the ranking member of the finance committee as my colleague.
You put it quite well. What seems to, for those of us listening, is that it's a divergence of views. The IMF appears to have looked at it from a different spectacle and then the Ghana team appears to have looked at it from a different telescope. So it's a, it's a different interpretation of...
Yeah. But it's, yeah, it's, it's, yes. You know, the, the, the honorable Eja Palmesa earlier has sought to create the impression that, that these matters have been dispelled. So I just thought for the record, this is, this is, this is a house of records. Yeah, I have another question. Can the honorable ranking member confirm that these figures you have provided here today are exactly what was contained in the finance minister's application to the IMF for the one billion dollar IMF COVID-19 relief fund? When they wanted one billion dollars from the IMF, which figures did they use?
Um, thank you very much, Mr Chairman. Mr Chairman, when the minister responsible for finance approached the IMF for one billion rapid credit facility, they used the data that converged with IMF numbers. Clearly, they did not use the data that they presented to parliament.
You see the unfairness to the committee? I mean, the two of you are talking about data that you know about. Uh, could you confirm that what is sent to this one is this one?
So, so, Mr, Mr Chairman, uh, Mr Chairman, to start with, I'll go back to the numbers. The data that they sent to IMF was that in the year 2018, Ghana's fiscal deficit was seven point one percent of GDP.
Yeah, I take the main, the Ministry of Finance.
The Ministry of Finance, this is an institution, the Ministry of Finance. Then in the year 2019...
In 2019 budget, instead of the seven point one, authoritatively, the minister reported three point seven percent for the record.
So even though, even though, even though they had informed IMF that in the year 2018, the fiscal deficit was seven point one percent of GDP, they told parliament that the fiscal deficit was three point nine percent of GDP.
I also take it that when you say that they informed them, they would have informed them, the Ministry of Finance would have informed IMF by way of certain documentation.
By, by way of documentation. The documentation is what I presented to you.
Which is, which is...
The, the rapid credit facility document. Can I have it?
So what, what, what do you, Ministry of Finance is writing to them, they write under...
No, because the, under the document, they show the source and they say that the source is coming from the authority, government of Ghana authority. So, and that you will see it in, in, in page three of the document. So the question here is, the Minister of Finance misled parliament, obviously by presenting different set of data to IMF and different set of data to I, to, to, to the Republic of Ghana.
Okay.
And that is why we are saying...
That, that is, that is, uh, that is, uh, take, well taken. Uh, can we have your next question? Yeah, my final question on this, uh, ground four relates to the matter I raised. As ranking member on the Committee of Finance, as your committee enquired from the finance minister, why on this particular matter, he presented different sets of figures? One to the Parliament of Ghana and a different one to the IMF, uh, when they needed one billion dollars desperately?
Yes, we have. I mean, several occasions, we've raised this issues. Um, I have particularly... Um, I have particularly raised it as ranking member with my colleague, Deputy Rankle, and other members of the committee. It is for that reason why the Ministry of Finance led by the Minister had agreed that going forward in the year twenty twenty two, they would treat all these expenditures above the line. And that is why you will notice in the twenty twenty two budget, that all these expenditures, all of a sudden, has been treated differently. In the past, they used to treat it as if it is not a expenditure, but today they are treating it separately. So they have accepted that going forward, this is not the way to report it. And this means that all these years, they have breached the fiscal responsibility rules. Meanwhile, they were hovering it underground. Okay, honorable members, uh, any other questions? Um, Honorable Patrick Guama.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Chair, on ground four. Honorable ranking member, your ground four starts with the word deliberate and dishonest. But from what you've done so far and from what you've presented to us, you haven't been able to lead any evidence to support the fact that there was this dishonest misreport, misreporting by the minister.
So you, you are agreeing that there is misreporting, but you think it's not deliberate? Is that what you're trying to say, sir?
You see, they have fairness in the question. See, we are not passing judgment.
Well, so I needed to get into the question.
What he said was that he looked at what you, you, you put out there. You're talking about dishonesty and all of that. So he's saying that at the end of the day, from what you presented, there doesn't seem to be any, um, fairness.
No, no, because Honorable, let me finish with this, please. Um, the, the, the key question is, there is a Fiscal Responsibility Act. And the act in section two is clear that when a minister.
Mr. Coach, Chairman, I am prepared to make progress. That's your view.
And when, yes.
No, there is, there is.
Now, Honorable, if, if I may land, there is a Fiscal Responsibility Act. And there, there's a set of rules that says that the fiscal, overall fiscal deficit should not exceed five percent, section two. And the primary balance must always be positive. And it goes on in section four, saying that if a minister exceeds it by one percentage.
I may have exceeded it, mistakenly, in regards to, that doesn't make it dishonest.
That's the point that he was making. Knowing very well that you have exceeded it. Instead of reporting the right numbers, the minister dishonestly decided to treat certain expenditures below the line, obviously to evade the fiscal responsibility.
You are leaving more to evade than all of that.
No, to, not to go through.
You got another question?
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Still on Patrick. Patrick, yes, those words, you may disagree with the word deliberate and dishonest. Uh, without wanting you to answer, between the Parliament of Ghana and the IMF, to whom does the minister owe an obligation of reporting accurately on the management of our public resources? We simply are saying that in a subsequent letter, you agreed to a deficit of seven point one percent to the IMF, when in fact, you reported three point seven to the Ghanaian Parliament. If I had used the word false reporting, probably that would even be stronger. So we, we are just talking about inaccurate reporting. And for me, the significant thing the Honorable Ablaqua and Atu have done responding to Honorable Mesa is to appreciate that, yes, there was disagreement between methodology. But the same minister considered to international best practice in his subsequent actions. So that gives him out when in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, he did not yield to the international best practice. So for the record.
And that doesn't make it dishonest.
Um, um, Mr. Chairman, I, I disagree strongly on that. And, yeah, yes, because you see, if, if, if you report. Well, I mean, we will evaluate the evidence and I want us to cross that bridge when we get there. But what is going around the table suggests that we need to clarify for purposes of the Ghanaian people. So if a minister knew or ought reasonably to have known that below the line reporting will understate the deficit and still went ahead and they did below the line reporting, understating the deficit to Parliament, that is dishonesty. There can be nothing more dishonest than that. And so we need, we need to be, we need to, I, I don't, I don't want us to be passing judgment around the table. You know, but, no, but, but of course, no, but of course, but of course, but of course, but of course, that is what is taking place, honorable members.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. May I?
Honorable Counselor.
Um, with all due respect, I think it's a bit too early.
Yes.
To hear pronouncements.
So, so counsel, you are, you are comfortable when the pronouncements?
Prejudicial.
The pronouncements and the, and the, and the estimations are coming from the side that supports the finance minister.
But you are not supposed to take sides. But you are not supposed to take sides.
Please, respectfully.
Let's, let's, let me, let me put rise with ourselves. Let me put rise in ourselves.
Good to me. So, so. Um, Counsel, I think we, we, we resolve it. We resolve it. So, yeah, we, let me.
Man, Chairman, let me just, let me just, uh, post this because you are a committee of record. Take for instance, a contingent liability of cyano hydro of six hundred and forty eight million.
This is dealing with what? What are we dealing with?
We are still dealing with data.
No, data in respect of?
Uh, 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 ground four. Now you reported the Parliament of Ghana that cyano hydro is butter and that you pay for, do that loan of over six hundred million US dollars with bauxite. Probably next year, realism will catch up with the minister and government. That your bauxite is still unprocessed. Your creditor wants his money for the six hundred million US dollars. It will come to hit the public purse and the public will be made to pay. That is why you must accept that when you come to Parliament and, uh, for me, we stated it even in the debate, there are times that we are disappointed in ourselves and in the institution of Parliament. If Parliament approve a loan of one billion or six hundred million in the name of butter and in twenty twenty three, you don't have tomatoes in exchange for pepper. Parliament must accept that it is not holding and protecting the public, uh, class well. So we've given you an example of contingent liability where you stated to the people's representative that on this matter, butter, exchange of goods for goods tomorrow, when the public is paying with hard N Forex, you will appreciate what that means.
Aaron, all of this is pretty easy export factor, isn't it?
Yeah. Okay, please go on, the Honorable Patrick Guama.
Thank you. Chairman, for the record, the twenty eighteen budget was presented in November twenty seventeen. For the record, the twenty nineteen budget was presented in November twenty eighteen. At the time that the legislation that my good friend is citing had not come into force. So it's an inappropriate legislation that he's seeking to rely on to establish that the minister was dishonest.
Well, I'm, I'm sure the lawyers for the minister will address us on that point. So let's, let's, uh, let's not debate it around there.
But for Honorable Ablaqua to force him, he read into your record the day the President assented to the bill as a fact.
Yes.
He did?
Yes.
No, he himself said December. I said, he said it. So it is not for Patrick to tell him what is appropriate. He did so. He said three months, go back to your record. When he was talking at least, he said three months data.
Yes, I said.
And he read.
The date of assent is twenty eighth of December twenty eighteen. And I said that was the day His Excellency the President assented to the bill. Go on, okay? And, and, and I talked about the fact that three days after twenty eighteen, he breached it. And twenty nineteen is where I've been dwelling. Twenty nineteen, he breached it completely and the rules were suspended in the year twenty twenty, not twenty nineteen. Very well, yeah. Honorable Guama, you are done. Uh, Honorable Zenetololi. Twenty twenty. Please, order, honorable members.
Thank you, Coach. My, my question is back to this table, um, with regards to the fiscal deficit. Was there any communication subsequently from the minister to the House, given the difference in the figures that he presented to Parliament versus the figures presented to the IMF with regards to the same budgets?
There hasn't been doc, statement from the minister himself to Parliament. Uh, what we have done over the years is that we've always raised it on the floor during the parliamentary debates. Uh, ministers and members of Parliament has gotten opportunity to speak to the fact. It's only until the year twenty twenty two, when the twenty twenty two budget was read and changes were made, when the minister, as part of his statement, when it was winding up, made statement that suggests that he has changed from the previous reporting to a current reporting when I raise the issue.
Please go ahead.
And given the reference document, was a reason given at that point for why that change in reporting had occurred from the previous budget to this, this current one?
All what they said is that if listened to us, they are changing the methodology.
Very well, Honorable Zenetololi. All that they said, who, who, who?
They have listened to us and they've changed the methodology.
Who is the?
At, at the committee, when the issue was raised, uh, uh, that's why they changed in methodology uh, from below the line accounting to above the line accounting. They said they have listened and they have changed it. Uh, honorable members, any more, uh, issues relating to item four? Okay. Honorable Eja Palmesa.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. Mr. Chairman, uh, I want to find out from, uh, Honorable Atu Fosin, whether he's aware that IMF ordinarily will sanction countries that misreport to them, whether he's aware.
Mr. Chairman, it depends on the level of misreporting and whether you are in the program or you are not under a program. So if you under, if under article four, they will not sanction you. They, they will not sanction you. Uh, if, if, if it has to do with the, uh, under a program and there is some proactions, you have to do it or there's something you have to do, you don't do it.
Even if you are dishonest, they won't sanction you.
Under article four, no, no.
I see.
In any event, the period that we are talking about, Ghana was under a program. I want to find out from him whether he is aware in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, Ghana was under an IMF program. Fact.
Mr. Chairman.
I want to find out from him whether he is aware that Ghana, between the period twenty seventeen and twenty twenty two, has been sanctioned by the IMF.
Mr. Chairman, Ghana left the IMF program in the year twenty nineteen. The reporting, as I'm talking about, at the time, end of year twenty nineteen, Ghana was not in an IMF program. And so this cannot warrant, uh, uh, a sanction from the IMF.
Very well.
Chairman, just on sanctions and, uh, Chairman, we are talking about protecting public resources of Ghana and ensuring that we work in a manner which reflects the public interest. What the Minister of Finance have succeeded in doing is to take Ghana into a debt distressed country with unsustainable debt. Now, the IMF Board, the IMF Board will indicate to you that where your debt is unsustainable. I'm coming to sanctions regime, where your debt is unsustainable, you are not likely to get board approval. And it affects the quantum of resources you are asking for from the IMF. You want three billion, they will look at your debt. And if it is not sustainable, so, uh, Mesa, the sanctions may not necessarily be will have punish you. A denial, where we are today as a country, if we do fail in getting an IM intervention, that will be fatal to the future of this country.
That, that will be the result of what Atu is talking about, uh, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and seventeen.
We are just saying that sanctions is not like a carrot and stick hypothesis where you are given a carrot. We are seeing that the stick may manifest in a board taking a stronger position against Ghana because these figures will ultimately affect our debt threshold and how they relate to us under a fan program. Thank you.
Um, wonderful. Chairman, I, I, with all due respect to the minority leader, this statement is purely speculative. My statement or question was to the effect to the accusation of misreporting by the government of Ghana under the stewardship of the Finance Minister. And I wanted to find out from the proponent whether Ghana have been sanctioned for misreporting.
Yeah, that is also most categorically. Yeah, that, no.
No.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Any question?
No, I'm fine.
Thank you.
Um, okay, Chairman, even though no sanctions, at least it compelled collective behavior by the Minister of Finance.
Minority leader, I just gave, the bosses are not you, the bosses are the two of us, yeah. You know, so let's wait, we'll get to the floor.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, our grounds says.
No, wait, wait a minute, wait, wait, wait.
Wait a minute, um, Honorable Ablaqua here for.
Yeah, check the staff for us. We have the technicians here.
Yes, Chairman, thank you for giving me the opportunity to ask just a question for clarification. Uh, Honorable Atu, in your presentation, you alluded to section two and section four of the Fiscal Responsibility Act. And you stated clearly that a breach of section two is a ground based on which Parliament may pass vote of censure on the minister. I want to ask you whether sanction or no sanction by the IMF. Parliament under section four, based on the breach, can proceed to censure the minister responsible.
Parliament of Ghana does not report to IMF. Parliament of Fin, of Ghana, obviously relies on the laws of Ghana. We passed this law, the law mandates us that if the minister breaches rules, he has to be censured. And I'm going online, in line with what is before us, Act nine eight two is clear that when minister breaches section two, more than one percentage point, he may be censured. And that is the basis of our grounds.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Honorable Ablaqua Fosin, you may now move to, um, yeah, yeah, ground, ground five.
I just one inocuous question to Honorable on, um, whether the G F S manual you spoke about, whether there are any items that will have to be reported either below the line or above the line. If anything like that.
So if, if, um, um, if you look at the G F S manual, um, under paragraph four point five three, it, it, you can, you can see below the line, the definition is there and ab- above the line definition is there.
And by the way, what is G F S?
Government Finance Statistics twenty fourteen. That is the global manual that countries use in fiscal.
Very, very well. Now, may, may, can you now move to, um, item five?
Um, Mr. Chairman, item five, our grounds is that there has been fiscal recklessness leading to the crash of the Ghana City, which is currently the worst performing currency in the world. Mr. Chairman, the reason why our currency is depreciating at such a rapid rate has to do with the debt overhang to the levels that our debt has now become unsustainable. And investors are panicking, smelling the possibility of debt re default, obviously because of how the fiscal has been managed over the years. Mr. Chairman, clearly, clearly, from the slide that I show you, we are saying that Ghana's fiscal path since twenty eighteen is the worst among forty six Sub-Saharan African countries. So if you are to compare the fiscal path of Ghana, in the last four years, we happens to be the worst in the entire Sub-Sah, Sub-Saharan African region, forty six countries, if you compare it. And I will show you what has happened to our fiscal since twenty seventeen. I'm on record to have commended the Minister of Finance publicly in Parliament in the hands that best may hold that in the year twenty seventeen, they did so well on the fiscal by staying true to the fiscal consolidation. But you see, they lost the way from the year twenty eighteen, when this below the line. When this below the line and above the line started. At that point. Ghanaians and major stakeholders felt that honestly Ghana economy is doing well, whilst in actual fact, we're not doing well. Because people often look at the fiscal deficit as a path, the fiscal path. And draw conclusions that they are adding to the debt based on the fiscal path. But unfortunately, because the overall balance was understated. People were not paying attention and others are asking us of how did we get here? And I've always said that we go here because the fiscal has been understated over the years and that is why we're not paying attention. And you could see that from twenty eighteen, that we did over seven percent, twenty nineteen over seven percent. Twenty twenty during COVID, we did seventeen point two percent of GDP, the highest in the sub region. And then apart from Seychelles, that did eighteen percent, almost every other person. Every other country, we, 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 we spent far more than them. So, Mr. Chairman, let me take you to what countries did. And this is the forty six African countries that have gone through.
Before you do, before you, I'm looking at the five again. I would have thought that your emphasis was on the crash of the Ghana City. Look at the five.
I, I am, I am making a point, can I, I first of all talk of the fiscal recklessness.
Leading to, leading to.
Leading to the crash, so I have to, I have to make the point on the fiscal recklessness as the reason why there was a crash. So, for example. I've listed here the forty six African countries. And you will notice that, you will notice that Ghana has run fiscal deficit in excess of fifty percent over four years. Over four years since twenty seventeen, in fact, twenty seventeen, we did well, so since twenty eighteen. So twenty eighteen, Mr. Chairman, you noticed that Ghana happened to our fiscal deficit was higher than most countries. Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. In the year twenty twenty, this, this data is coming from World Bank. This data is coming from World Bank, I take it from the website, the World Bank. World Bank, yes, from, from the website of the World Bank, the African report. The African report from the World Bank website. So in the year twenty twenty, you could see that apart from Seychelles, almost every country, in fact, in the sub region, no country did fiscal deficit above seven percent. In the entire Africa, Ghana was the second highest apart from Seychelles. Seychelles did eighteen percent of GDP in fiscal deficit. By the previous year, their fiscal deficit was zero point nine percent of GDP. And then the year before, in the year twenty eighteen, their fiscal deficit was zero point two percent of GDP. However, in the year after, the year twenty twenty one.
Attempting to disrupt your train of thought, keep focus please, I don't want to. I mean, I've said that I'll be happy if you are derailed, but keep focused. Um, when you talk about the physicals and the fiscal deficit and all of that. Let me, let me understand my elementary conception of this matters. This, this result from what expenditure?
It's, it's high expenditure.
High expenditure.
High expenditure.
To do the roads, to do the water, the railways.
Whatever, whatever the expenditure is.
What's the name again, the fly, fly over, what is the name? Remind me, those who know the.
Honorable Katie, Honorable Katie.
No, no, let me understand, is that what we're talking about?
I'm, I'm talking of high level expenditure numbers. If you, if you spend more than your means, you crash.
But it's for those things, is that it?
I don't know what it is for, but I'm giving you the headline, the expenditure levels, I don't know what is it for.
So, Chair, I thought, Chairman, Chair, I, I thought when you were outlining the list. You add the National Cathedral, the SDI Secretariat, NABCO Secretariat, the bloated government. And then corruption is all part of it, the Audit General's report, so it's a tall list.
Uh, yes, 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 Mr. Chairman, Chairman, you, you. Mr. Chairman, first, I'm dealing with high level macro numbers. And what this means to every economy. And if your fiscal path is not sustainable, you eventually find yourself in a debt trap. Unfortunately, Ghana's problem today is debt trap. We have confronted ourselves with unsustainable debt due to the fiscal path we have created since twenty eighteen. And that is what I'm trying to explain. Mr. Chairman. Every single country in the list that have provided forty six Sub-Saharan African country. If you look at the path, Ghana is the worst. In the year twenty eighteen, in the year twenty twenty in particular, when Ghana had to see an election and obviously also confront with COVID. We overspent our budget in excess of seventeen percent of GDP. One would have thought that as soon as you find yourself in such a situation, you will decline. In terms of subsequent year, you have to do fiscal consultation to catch up. Unfortunately, in the year twenty twenty one, instead of us to go through fiscal consultation. We saw a government that still want to continue with the path of fiscal recklessness. Fiscal populism by creating additional expenditure. And you can see that Seychelles, that actually saw a fiscal deficit of very eighteen percent. The subsequent year, they reduced their deficit by seven percent.
Put it on there, everybody is listening, the whole of Ghana is listening. Why not put in the layman's step, because even some of us are struggling, so why not put it in layman's step? Listen, instead of the government cutting down on development of infrastructure, there was a government still insists on building roads, building this.
Don't worry, don't worry, don't worry. Instead of governments, instead of government cutting down on frivolous expenditures such as National Cathedral. And the size of government, they decided to go on.
Their luxury chartered jet travels. Is the chairman inviting us to provide a list of reckless expenditure?
I'm not listening to my co-chair on this, he's trying to advise me on the point, I'm not taking. But one second, yeah, yeah, no, no. No, no, he would, no, no, Chucky, he's the co-chair, he can always come in. In the scheme of things, I don't know much about the cathedral, but in the scheme of things, I don't think, what you talk about, big items that you are talking about. You, you, you are trivializing your own argument, because I think in the, 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 the scheme of things, this doesn't. But anyway, the point I make is that.
The cathedral is worth four hundred million dollars.
The government cut down on the provisions that have identified, put it that way so the ordinary Ghanaian understands what we are talking about.
So Katie, I, I think I've made my point. We, we, we happen to be the worst among forty six countries in this sub region in terms of the fiscal path in the last four years.
If there are no questions, we can go to the next.
The reason why we are where we are.
Oh, okay, that's good, so this is fairly short. If there are no questions, any questions, yeah, clock.
Thank you very much, co-chair, I think just following your train of thought. Would it be possible for the committee to be provided with any documents regarding certain expenditure that you're referring to? You made reference, you've made reference to the cathedral, you made reference to a few other.
My colleague, the Honorable Okudjito is the MP for the cathedral and I'm sure he, he, he will, he will be, he will do justice for that.
Oh, Chairman, the honorable ranking member has, has, has reduced my stature, I want him to add chartered jets as well. Not only National Cathedral, but chartered luxury jet travels. It's also my area of expertise.
So I, I'm, I'm, I'm sure the good people of Nocton would. No, no, Honorable, Honorable, Honorable Samokujito. I, I think that you are disrupting the, the flow of evidence to the committee. Honorable Zenato.
Yes, so Chairman, before he continues to the sixth, just for the record of this committee. The Honorable Atu Fosin is leading evidence that there is a strong nexus between your fiscal policy, your monetary policy and the strength of your currency. And that if you do not manage your fiscal well, as is not being managed well by the Minister for Finance. That's why interest rate is going high and that's why the depreciation of the CD is going high. So for the record, we are saying that fiscal irresponsibility and justified liesize of government and its associated expenditure have contributed to this fiscal slippages, which is affecting the performance of the economy. Thank you, Chair.
No, co-chair, one second, I don't, we heard all of that. What we didn't hear do was any reference to the COVID and to the crash in the international world. We didn't hear about the rise of the dollar, we didn't hear anything about of that nature. Who wouldn't allow you? You have the whole time.
You have been protecting me every second.
To make sure that you have a free flow. What's your problem? You have all the time, if you want to start again, I, I too specific, are you done with the five you said, yes?
No, because you keep introducing me.
Atu, since when did you become kind of unsure about?
I know because you are.
Yeah, so uncle talks, you chat up with it, yeah. Yeah, so.
So, Honorable Katie, honorable members. Uh, is your question answered? The Honorable Dr. Zenato Rolles.
I just wanted confirmation of the fact that he can furnish the committee with the relevant documents to buttress his points on the issue of financial recklessness.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Co-chair made reference to, I'm not done.
I thought she was.
And the, the co-chair made reference to infrastructure. And mentioned roads and hospitals and witches. Was it, was it off record?
That wasn't off record, no.
Yes, all I'm trying to do is to have some clarity on specifically what he's referring to. Because we need more specifics to be able to make an informed decision and report back to the plenary.
Okay, Honorable Enyemadu.
Council, because I thought he had some objection, objection or something from council.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think this is the very issue that I was referring to. We are now being invited to ask the proponents to provide more documents. And I think we need to be extremely careful about this, that's, that's all, thanks.
We, we would define the nature of the document that we are asking for, we'll try to define it.
As they make reference to documents and tender them, we'll make sure that mandately, they will be made available to you. I took note of a World Bank report, Africa report, which is not, you know, on the, on the list here, so. Um, you do well to tender that document to the committee. Yes, Honorable Enyemadu and then Honorable Ahefou.
I may also treat myself with a question that Doctor Zenato asked. And I would want to draw the proponents' attention to what, how paragraph five is couched. Fiscal recklessness leading to the crash of the city. And I would want to support what she had requested for, that if you can get a detailed expenditure which would lead or point to the committee that the ministry was reckless. Thank you.
Very well, Honorable Atu Fosin.
Chairman, you know, before Atu Fosin came, you know, this morning when I arrived. Chairman, I shared a proverb with you and Honorable Enyemadu. I said if you are pounding fufu for a blind man, the best way to assure the blind man that you are not eating the fufu is to be whistling. You have to be whistling whilst you are pounding. Is the city crash or not crash? We have done our whistling.
Mr. Chairman, it's overruled.
Who, who are the, who are the?
Yes, so he's, yes, they will provide the documents, the, the figures, the specific expenditure. Honorable, they, no, the, the specific expenses. For instance, for instance, the Honorable Minority Leader earlier on tendered a warrant in respect of the cathedral, that's an expense. And, and that, that, that is where part of what build up to the expenditure that you are referring to, isn't it? Yes, so it, that is the nature of the evidence that would want you to tender before the court.
Mr. Chairman, when you say, when you say fiscal recklessness, I mean, it looks as if members are trivializing the issue to just expenditure. Mr. Chairman, fiscal management is a combination of revenue expenditure and tax revenue and financing.
I prefer, I prefer that we're mindful of our diction, when you say that we're trivializing.
No, no, because we, we are, okay, I redraw that, I redraw that uncle, I redraw that, I redraw that then. But we don't need to just concentrate on one leg of fiscal management. My point, my point is that when you run fiscal deficit, four years in a row, amounting to fifty six percent of your GDP. Higher than Sub-Saharan African average. In fact, no country among the forty six African countries has run that kind of large fiscal deficit. In quote, you have increased your debt by that magnitude.
Well, you made a point.
So therefore, so therefore, so therefore, you don't overspend above your means. If you're a young person, you stand life, you don't have money to spend above your means, that's reckless.
If there are no questions.
Yeah, co-chairs. Thank you for the opportunity to ask a question. By ground five. It is categorically stated that Ghana City has crashed as a result of recklessness. And is the worst performing currency in the world. You have been a deputy finance minister. During your tenure of office in twenty sixteen, with particular reference to the exchange rate, CD to dollar. How much was the rate? And now what is the exchange rate?
Um, thank you very much. Um, the, the Ghana CD, at the time we were leaving office in twenty eighteen, at the Central Bank was three point nine. Two one CD in twenty sixteen. Um, in, in the market is four point one, some places four point two. Today, 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 and this is public knowledge, you can get it from the internet, Interbank. Um, today, in the Interbank, the CD to the door lies about fifteen CDs. Four point eight, fourteen point eight, fifteen CDs depending. Um, the CD has depreciated year to date in the last ten months.
Atu, hold on, hold on, my colleague, I think we're getting a bit unsure about this. Um, the question was asked whether it was a rejection, whether he, he is cross as happening or something. And then we asked our question for clarification, by the way, this, he's happy, he thinks I've come to his age. Now you, you say that, well, why, why is so long, isn't it? That's why I see you laughing, you know, because I'm helping you out. Yeah, I don't think he's under, under any responsibility to be kind of answering this sort of question. If we ask for clarification, that is fair, but pointedly during your time, this is your time, well, he's for now. He's not a finance minister and he's all, he's all under any sense of motion, you know, so let, let's be conscious about the question that. Well, maybe, maybe, maybe we overruled that one, yes, sir.
He has answered the question already.
Halfway through it, it's overruled, so.
You, you don't let me start a question and in between you truncate me, listeners will not appreciate the point.
I, I thought, I thought I should overrule it, it's overruled, yeah. So you are, that answer is postponed, yes, another person.
Thank you, who else?
Chairman, I hear the ranking member list forty six countries which have performed better than Ghana. I want to find out from him whether any of these countries that he listed. Their finance minister had to deal with energy sector debts that he inherited when he came into office to manage the affairs of the various countries. I want to know from him whether any of the forty six countries that is listed had to deal with this huge energy sector debts in those countries.
Some of those countries didn't inherit ASLA, which provided buffer for them to deal with some of the energy sector debt. Which ASLA energy sector level you have even collateralized up to twenty thirty five. Honorable Atu responded to that.
Mr. Chairman, some of these countries are at war. War. To the level of they have to buy huge ammunition and their revenue base has derailed. Yet they perform better than Ghana. So, Mr. Chairman, you, you, it would be wrong for you to zero in into one, one item and conclude. If you are to take critical look at these countries. Ghana is far better off than most of these countries that we may be referring to. In terms of all the economy issues indicators and everything, yet we perform worse than them. So his arguments, Mr. Chairman, I respectfully disagree with him because we cannot be a country that is performing worse than a war torn country.
Isn't it also part of a reflection of their economies, in the level of development in their respective countries, isn't it?
Mr. Chairman, that is why it is wrong for one person to isolate one expenditure. Under the previous administration, we had to contend with single spine. We did not treat it below the line. We contend with a major expenditure single spine that the previous administration inherited from then President Kufu's government, yet it was contained and paid for and accounted for appropriately. We had to contend with doing so. We had to contend with that and did a major, major investment in doing so, we did not treat it below the line.
Which resulted, which resulted in what? Which resulted, which resulted in what?
That did not, that did not resolve the issue.
Your Dumsor and your plans.
So, 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 Mr. Chairman, even the energy payment.
And why is that, why the chairman is talking, you wouldn't let me complain?
Because, uh, because I'm speaking, you, you have asked me to stop.
The chairman has the privilege of stopping you.
No, just ask me to stop and I'll stop.
So stop, now when I finish, you could, that's right, you know, so I have also stopped, so.
He said I used only one example, let me give him another example. Can he tell us any of these forty-six countries that their finance minister had to expend huge amounts of money to clean their banking sector? Any one, just one.
I, I prefer that you, you put it as suggestion that isn't the case that quite a lot of this also went into the cleaning of the, this.
I'll be, I'll be guided accordingly, Chairman, very well, very well. And, and, and lastly, Chairman, I'm sure that the ranking member of the Finance Committee is very much familiar with the Public Financial Management Act, Act nine to one. Proponent of the motion, and if, if I may refer him to section twenty-two of the Public Financial Management Act, because I heard him say that, um, uh, the fiscal management relates to revenue, expenditure and financing. Okay, um, if you, I may refer to section twenty-two. Approval of annual budgets by Parliament. Twenty-two-one. Parliament shall, by the thirty-first of December of each financial year, concern approve, A, the annual budget and the correlated work plan of the Government of Ghana for the ensuing financial year. B, the appropriation bill. And C, any other bill that may be required to implement the annual budget. Twenty-two-two, the annual budget approved by Parliament takes effect from the first day of January of the ensuing year. Now, having quoted the provision in the law, I want to find out whether the Parliament of the Republic of Ghana in December of twenty twenty-one complied with the provisions of this act. And if the Parliament did not comply, would you not agree with me that the failure of the Parliament of Ghana to comply with the provisions of the law has contributed to the fiscal situation that we find ourselves in as a country? Thank you.
Parliament of Ghana, would you remember?
Um, uh, Honorable, Honorable, Honorable Member, with all due respect, I think that the question should be overruled. And I say this because the Constitution, um, clearly, um, entrenches the concept of separation of powers. The executive branch of government has its, uh, functions clearly stated in the Constitution. The Minister of Finance exercises management of the financial resources of this country on behalf of the President, who under Article fifty-eight is a receptacle of all executive authority. If that authority resolves in any situation of mismanagement, of any, I mean, in any situation of fiscal recklessness, the executive branch must take the responsibility. In fact, it is not for nothing that the, uh, drafters of the Constitution provided in Article eighty-two-four of the Constitution that ministers can be, I mean, censured. If we took the logic of your question, uh, to its conclusion, then it means that this exercise, this, what we are doing today is an exercise in futility, very dis.
Not entirely, it seems to be suggesting that Parliament may be a contributory factor in all that, uh.
Chairman, we've taken note, if it's indicting Parliament, if it's indicting Parliament, let it be. We are individual members of Parliament who have shared our view with you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if, if you permit me, I mean, the point that I'm making is this. The provisions of the Public Financial Management Law is clear. Section twenty-two imposes a duty on Parliament to perform three actions by a certain date. Parliament indeed approved the annual budget and correlated work plan of government for twenty twenty-two.
Honorable, Honorable, Honorable Member, Honorable Member. With all, with all, with all due, with all due respect.
Implement the budget, it's a straightforward provision that we all are living witness to.
Please take a cue from the Chair, your question is overruled. The witness is not, uh, going to answer that question, yes?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, um, I, I'm, hands out, it's my witness, I've raised this issue of.
The question is overruled, please proceed with your evidence.
Chairman, I, I will move on, I'll move on to the next item.
Wait, wait, wait.
The banking sector that I did not answer, so if I can answer that and move on.
Which one is that?
No, he, he raised an issue whether, um, these countries in question, the forty-six African countries had to contend with the banking sector doing happen.
I think we resolved that.
No, no, it was a question, and, Chairman, it's important I answer.
I rephrase it and then he said he was guided by that and I think we.
So, so I shouldn't answer?
Um, well.
It's important to answer.
Answer, answer that, he says it's fine, um, any other questions? Yes, sorry.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chairman. Chairman, I will be relying on the special audit conducted by the Auditor General presented to this House last week. Special audit report on the recoveries made from.
We're not going to allow staff to come from, uh, uh, the magicians, uh, whatever, uh, let's fiscal, what is, what is this document?
Special audit, I'm using it to ask a question.
No, no, where is it, where is it on this?
It doesn't, it doesn't, it's not, it's not been tendered in evidence.
People can be pulling the staff from wherever and then be asking.
No, 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 check, no, no, no. No, check, my, I just want you to know that my question has, has basis.
I didn't think, I didn't have basis.
Proceeding from a report.
No, wait a minute, wait a minute, I think we're getting enough of this. Um, one, two, three, up to seventeen, and then we added a few more to this. Council, we added one, so that will be eighteen. Ah, he has this freshly minted stuff from wherever it was pulled out from and he's going to add to that. So if you want to stick to the document that we have here, he actually hasn't referred to this. Uh, Atu, did you refer to this particular document? You haven't seen it, didn't you?
Yeah, but, but, Honorable Katie, I mean, Honorable Chair. Uh, yes, um, I think that, I think that members, members are entitled as of right to refer to public documents in order to ask follow-up questions. You know, so he referred to the joy FM in, in, in as a predicate for his question on the, uh, the reaction of the IMF. And he didn't even tender it, you know, it was not overruled, council, you were happy with that, you want to object to this one?
Well, I, I, um. We don't need to put you, we don't need to put you on the spot. If the question, if the question that is about to ask. Council, now, hold it, hold your breath for a minute, hold your breath, put your thing, put your thing. You can ask your question without reference to this, can't you?
So, Chairman, I to understand that moving forward, members cannot, cannot ask questions because the Honorable Mesa was the first to introduce a material, a foreign material, not on the list.
We are not going to do that again, so this is the first casualty of that, uh, decision.
I, 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 I hope Chairman is not being biased and unfair. Uh, but the question really can still be asked without, without that document. The matter relating to fiscal recklessness. Will you classify clear cases of wastage? The Auditor General has just retrieved two point two billion from wrong pockets. Will you say that those infractions, irregularities, wastage, morfeasance is part of the fiscal recklessness that you are referring to? I, I just want to be clear.
I, I think you have a very important point out there. Um, when we say fiscal recklessness, frivolous expenditures are part of the recklessness. Obviously, wastage in the system is part of the recklessness and morfeasance, I mean, things that can be avoided. Some of the reports, when you read them, you ask yourself, what is happening here? So if you have all of this money going down the drain, in the end, it's the taxpayer who have to pick the liability and pay either through taxes or through other means. So it's part of the problem. Fiscal recklessness, I'm only looking at the high-level numbers. How come we have spent so much as a percentage to our GDP or above our tax revenue or total revenue? That for me, I think is something that we have to immediately flag it if we had known that this is the level of the, the fiscal, uh, deficit that we are committed. For example, for example, when government had to go through the, the financial sector cleanup, the way and manner it was done obviously amount to recklessness because you cannot go to the bond market and borrow euro bond just to collapse a bank. You don't do that. Because when you use this kind of euro bond money for this kind of expenditure, when the time comes for payout, you have difficulty paying out. So when we say fiscal recklessness, it's wastage, is the way and manner the fiscal is accounted for and the high level of the fiscal. Obviously, if it was high enough and they were aware, they would have taken position to decline. And that is why I made the word fiscal recklessness.
Okay, council for the finance minister, he, he has his, uh, uh, hand up. Is he in relation to the question?
I, we just need clarity on the question because he specifically said the Auditor General has retrieved. So I, I really want us to understand what he means, how does this situate fiscal recklessness in the situation where he's saying the Auditor General has retrieved, we just want clarity on that.
Okay, um, so, okay, um, since, council, since you are not, uh, part of this process, what I would advise is that you can raise technical legal objections to what is happening, but in terms of asking for substantive clarity of questions that have been asked, you do not have the right before this committee.
I don't understand, I don't understand, why can't he?
No, because, because, uh, Honorable, uh, Co-Chair, with all due respect, the Honorable Finance Minister will have a turn at this table. And if he does, he will now have the opportunity to make, to make.
He would have to contend with, and if he doesn't understand through his counsel, you mean they couldn't see clarification?
Yes, that is what I'm, I'm, that's what I'm saying. What, no, 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 what, no, I, 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 I think, I think, I think we. No council has been, no question has been.
I think he's agreed that we can, we can clarify.
Yeah, Chair, I can, I can, I can happily clarify. The Auditor, the Auditor General is reporting that they have set out to retrieve four point seven billion. Four point seven billion, the report you don't want me to refer to, so.
But so why would you refer to a report, or would you refer to?
So we are, we are discussing fiscal recklessness.
Yeah, sure, so you, you have not referenced it.
And, and my, and my question, uh, Chair, you know that I, I, I can never be intimidated.
You know, I never intend to intimidate, uh, the North Tongue, uh, Astro, I don't intend to, so, but you go for it without reference to this.
So, so, so the question is very clear in my mind. Wastage, morfeasance, financial irregularities. The Auditor General is in pursuit of four point seven billion. He's retrieved two point two billion, two point five billion remain, uh, out there, uh, that he's, he's in search of. And I just wanted to find out if that is part of fiscal recklessness, the fiscal recklessness that you speak of. Does it include morfeasance, corruption, you know, public funds in wrong pockets? That's, that's my question.
Um, Sami, thank you very much. I, I, I think, um, it's a fact that if we say fiscal recklessness, it concludes all of that. The key question here is, are those recklessness done only at the Ministry of Finance? I do not believe it, I think it is the economy-wide, it's the government-wide, and most ministers of finance are corporate. You can't blame only the minister responsible for finance, but, but the PFM Act empowers the minister responsible for finance to deal with it. And that is why the PFM Act makes more or less the Minister of Finance the most powerful minister. So he is clothed with all the necessary legal framework to confront his colleagues. So if he fails to do that, obviously he has engaged in fiscal recklessness.
So, so, wait a minute, wait a minute, Atu. Wait a minute, so he's not here because he's caused all this mess, but because he hasn't really held those people, he hasn't imple- sent quite a lot of those people responsible, is that the point you are making?
Their, their, their fiscal powers is vested in the finance.
So, so it is, is effectively been held to account for.
Of course, if, if the Minister of Roads overspent and the Minister of Finance pays, it is the responsibility of the Minister of Finance, even though the act was committed by the Minister of Roads. Because the PFM Act empowers that only the Minister of Finance that can give their financial clearance for the minister to engage in that act. So whether, and if the minister fails to do that, the Minister of Finance can deal with him.
It isn't the minister who is responsible for this, it's the whole.
It's government-wide.
The caboodle of, of it, that makes, it makes this whole thing wanted.
Well, well, uh, except that, the Chairman, if, if you had allowed me to, uh, reference that report at day thirty-five, you see that the Ministry of Finance has a one point six billion CD question to answer there.
You have another question?
So the Finance Minister is not particularly exonerated in, in, in the, in the matter. Yes, I, I have another question.
Let me make this.
I think let's make some progress.
I have not exonerated the Minister of Finance. I've said he has all the powers under the PFM Act to confront it when it happens. His failure will mean that he has to carry the cross.
Yeah, my final question, uh, Chair, on the ground five. The Honorable Ranking Member of Finance made reference to using bonds for the financial sector cleanup. My perspective is quite different. I want to find out in terms of the policy choices that were available to the Finance Minister and to the government, the route they chose, was that what was in the national interest so far as our fiscal management of the economy is, is concerned? The, the policy choice, that route which cost us, I don't know, the figures keep changing in this house. I don't know if it's twenty-five billion or whatever, or whatever it is now. Uh, what do you have to say about those policy choices so far as fiscal recklessness is concerned?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I, I.
The Honorable Ahefou.
Uh, Honorable Atu Fosin does not run the Finance Ministry. For him to be able to answer this policy-related question, I, I strongly believe that, yes, and, yes.
Any views?
Policy choices, policy choices, we are discussing fiscal recklessness.
Chairman, um, I have a strong view on the way and manner.
What you did six years ago, which you would have violated.
Financial sector cleanup was conducted, have a strong view on that. The Chairman, um, countries, countries, countries have to contend with banking sector issues. There have been best practices on how the financial sector cleanup could have been managed. In the UK, they had to go through similar when Royal Bank of Scotland and Lloyds Bank had to be bailed out. In the end, they paid back. Ghana decided to go on a route where the burden on the banking sector cleanup was transferred to the taxpayer. I think that was wrong. I think that Ghana could have decided to go for other ways in dealing with the banking sector issues instead of what they did. That was a policy, wrong policy choice.
Okay, thank you, the Honorable Ahefou.
Honorable Atu, you said you do not borrow money for banking sector cleanup. How does this amount to recklessness on part of the Finance Minister?
If I'm the Minister of Finance, there's no way I was going to borrow money to collapse a bank, I wouldn't do that, so that is recklessness.
No, no, that, that, yeah, that, that is his answer, that's a witness's answer, so, uh, Honorable Zenato, do you have a question? Or Honorable Eni Madu, okay?
Let me, let me, let me do my last one, then we decide. Let me, let me do my last one, then we decide on the answer. I thought, Sammy, you were talking about bonds and all the others. He himself was talking about bonds and others. I, that's right. Reason there. Atu, was ever any bonds raised in the year 2015? Harun, why are you laughing? Don't anticipate me. 2015, which raised about 1 billion for the country, 1 billion dollars. Recall that, 2015. Some, some bonds were raised at the.
Of course.
2015, you recall that? I, and it's the case that your interest on it was about 10.75%. Mr. Chairman, why do you keep on laughing? Who are they? Uh, that, 10.75, is that it?
Correct.
And it is suggested that is the most expensive whatever which was ever raised in the country. Is there anything to it?
I disagree.
Okay. But you know what I'm talking about?
I disagree, yes, I know what you're talking about.
Okay. When there was a World Bank guarantee of 400 million and then there was the interest payment of 750 million.
That is why I said I disagree.
And you were still having to pay 1 billion, which is all what the Finance Minister has had to be paid, which is led to the figures that you identified out there. You disagree with everything?
Mr. Chairman, the previous.
You disagree with everything, don't you?
I disagree because the previous.
I haven't asked for answer, you disagree with everything?
I'm making the point that this administration.
Why not answer my question? You disagree or you don't disagree?
I disagree with you.
Full stop.
I'm giving you further and better perspective.
I'm not interested in your further.
You will need it, you will need it. Because this administration, within a period of four years, had borrowed from the euro bond market in excess of 12 billion US dollars. As against the previous administration that borrowed 4 billion US dollars. So, so we are talking of how reckless it is and that's why I have to give you those information.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't a quantum. My interest wasn't the one billion. I wouldn't have thought so significant in terms of the figures. I'm talking about the, what you call the coupon rate. You have 7.5% return on that and all the World Bank guarantees and all of that. That's what I'm talking about.
So can I explain that?
No, you can't. You.
He answered my question. He said he disagrees. No, no, it will be grossly unfair to curtail his answer.
All right.
I think it's important because you are comparing.
I allow you, go on. Let me hear you.
Mr. Chairman, bond prices depend on the time of issuance and there are so many factors that account for bond prices. If you want to compare bond prices, obviously you have to look at the real interest, how much you are paying. For example, recently, government had to issue zero coupon bond. And the question you have to ask yourselves, what is the real interest rate of the rare coupon of the zero coupon bond? Simple put, I borrowed today, I get paid all my interest and tomorrow, when the time comes, I will end up paying only the principal. What is the real interest? I think it is more expensive than the 2015 bond and that is my answer.
And Chairman, just there, on the banking sector, the Honorable Atufosin and the proponents of the motion, we are strongly arguing that there is an opportunity costs to an expenditure of 23 billion for a banking sector cleanup. If you recall, the Association of Bankers called on Excellency President Nana Dudanga at that time and said that some interjection of some liquidity of some amount not exceeding 1 billion. Even at that time, and we'll tend to it again tomorrow, Daily Graphic reported this in their front page. They said if we go 500 million, you could save a number of these banks. Now, you said no categorica, that you would not help them with any liquidity intervention. You ended up spending 23 billion in a cleanup, where they said that many of them, if they got a certain modicum of support from government. So it's lost spending 23 billion and people have gone home, comfortable with people's savings and investment. That must be of concern to you, Chairman, that you refuse to support those who are in need. Don't forget the families who have died as a result of they being asked to go home because once a bank is not working, mother and child, wife and husband in crisis. So you refuse 500 million, 1 billion to save the life of some of these financial institution. And you are happily saying that we should celebrate you after spending 23 billion, which you are not prepared to report. That's, that's what he's emphasizing on because this was below the line. So if you left our banking sector expenditure of 23 billion, who should bear the brunt for it? Same public, same taxpayer. Those are the contradictions we are pointing out too. Thank you.
We'll come back to the banking and let me, Atu Fosikah complete this. Just recite out the nature of the point at half. Honorable Chair.
Yeah, Chair, I raise this point of order, so we will be guided. I thought that the proponents are to make out their case. And we will give an opportunity, fair opportunity, to the Honorable Finance Minister to respond. And that the tenure of the Honorable Atufosin, when he was Deputy Finance Minister, is not what is, what, what, what? Yeah, but, but the question, but continuously the question is coming up about bonds he raised. It's as though he is under scrutiny.
Yeah, for example, the question of the bond that I'm raising, not particularly about his tenure of office, but the fact that a particular bond of this nature was raised in the country. It just coincide that that was at a time when he was in office. Well, yeah, 2015. So if it happens to be the case that he was in office at that time, so be it. But, but I'm not putting it to him that he has done anything wrong or this. And I'm asking for clarification. Indeed, I was going to do further clarification. As the Chairman talking, you not debate with the Chairman. Block his line, block the line so that he's not able to speak. Atu, Atu, listen, this is what I was going to say. See, it is, it is share, it is some message at heart for whatever. That's all right. Chairman, Chairman have some, Chairman have some liberties, you know. One of the most outrageous bonds out there must be a 1 billion lent to, 1 billion dollars, lent to Ghana in 2015 at 10.75 interest with a 400 million guarantee from the World Bank. A buyer of the bond in 2015 is already guaranteed to get 1.15 billion and they are still owed 1 billion and 860 million of interest paper. A simple matter of you, you understand this better than I do. You know about this and whether it makes sense or does it make sense?
Chairman, the person who sent the tweet.
Calm down, all of you calm down, Atu go on.
The person who sent the tweet did a follow up tweet the next day. And I, I thought you can read that one as well. Yes, on, on the same thing, so the same person. This is a tweet.
Funny, now your uncle's glasses is just one point, he doesn't see the other one, you know, so, yes. So what is your comment on, what is your comment on this one?
My answer is that just a follow up tweet by the same person.
I'll have a look.
If you can read it, it will clarify your position.
I'll try and read.
Yes.
Very well, Honorable here for, you have your hand up there.
Chairman, cool Chairman. My, my issue is that what is good for Peter is good for Paul.
That is not a wish.
I, I asked a question based on 2016 exchange rate figures as compared to the exchange rate now. Chairman overrule this particular question. So I least expect my Chairman to go contrary to his own rules.
You don't play by the same rules. The Chairman have your own rules and the members have your own.
No, the rules are the same.
Ah, master.
So Chairman, as point, as point is that from your own record.
Uh, counsel, are you that brave?
To, to actually buttress his point, the reference that Okudjo Tureblako was making in the Auditor's report. I, I believe that if we are to do our job properly and members of Parliament are asking questions and making reference to documents that are within the public domain, they should be permitted.
When we get to the floor, when we get to the floor, he would have it. I keep it, he will get to the floor.
Chairman, on the official records, it must show that the reference that he made to the document, because you're making reference to something we don't know. You said Chairman aloud.
Yeah, sure.
Um, Honorable Japal also made, made mention to something online. This is a document that is an official document presented to the House.
What you make it consistently, lawyers of the Finance Minister are complaining that, you see originally when they came, we almost aborted this and the sanity broke out and we decided to go by the way we are going. They were saying that we should restrict them to the particular documentation, which were going to buttress the charges that you had made. And which for me made a lot of sense, but in the end it looked like it was getting a bit difficult. So we decided that we weren't going to allow all of us open rain to just raining this, bring this document, bring document. We listed about 17 of the documents.
Chairman, that is for the proponents of the motion. But if members are questioning certain things and can make reference to documents.
When we come back to do the other ones, I'll give you the document that you can raise.
You must, you must, you must indicate whether it's being allowed or not. Because for the record, the counsel of the, the, the minister raised the question about where the document, the information Sami was referring to was from. And it's from a document that you are refusing to allow as evidence.
Yeah, I'm not taking my mind on this one.
No, yeah, with all due respect, Co-Chairman.
But Chairman, Chairman, don't get involved in this, Co-Chairman, don't get involved.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, I think it's important, especially.
With the, the, the five, we, we are six. We are six and seven, let's make a decision.
Honorable, honorable members, we may have, we may have to take a vote on the issue, whether and the extent to which we can rely on public documents. You know, well, let's, let's see, let's see, let's see how.
Your license, your license.
Okay, the Honorable Haruna Idris, you have, you have a, your hand up.
Chairman, I wanted to do a quick one on three and it's on item three because.
We're going back to three?
Yes.
We're wondering what to do with the six and seven?
No, he will conclude on that. Three is very straightforward, I'll deal with it. Illegal payment of oil revenues in 12 shore accounts in flagrant violation of Article 176 of the 1992 Constitution.
Why do you think that is going to be fairly short? Let's decide on what to do.
Under one given the evidence.
Wait a minute, Harun, bear with us. There's this suggestion that we may want to go for break or whatever. We have thought that, wait a minute, wait a minute. We have thought that the only items outstanding were the six and seven. If you add that one to it, we're going to have three more items. What is the sense of the.
No, that one, there is 100 million dollar.
Sorry?
Standing in Jubilee holding, which was not paid until.
We can do 20 minutes for the remaining two.
Against section three of the PR.
See, I'm talking and he's not listening and he's going on and on and on and on and on. The three and then the other ones.
The Honorable Atufosin, are you suggesting that you can do the three and the remaining ones in 20 minutes? Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I indicated that. My job is to take you through item four, five, six and seven. So far I've done four and five, six and seven.
We are here in medical conditions why people should have break. So let's take a decision. Is there, is there a sense of the committee that we break for one hour and come back at four o'clock? Sorry, let's get it right. I can see through. Two hours.
One hour is okay. Honorable Minority Leader, I crave your indulgence.
He was saying that we could finish it in 20 minutes, but there are those who said that they need to get break.
Yes, very well, very well. Thank you very much, Counsel. We crave your indulgence. At four o'clock, the committee will resume sitting. So honorable members, the committee will adjourn for one hour and to return at four o'clock PM in the forenoon.
That was the sitting of the Ad-hoc Committee set up by the Speaker of Parliament, of course, to deliberate on the motion for censure against the Finance Minister. Now merely we've seen the Minority Leader Haruna Idris and the Ranking Member on the Finance Committee of the House, Kessia Latofosin, who's also MP, who's also a member of Parliament, the leading evidence. Now you'd understand why they are the ones leading the evidence because this motion, of course, is coming from the minority. And of course, the leader of the minority is Haruna Idris there. Now, Kessia Latofosin is a Ranking Member on the Finance Committee of the House. And so for a motion that is seeking to censure a Finance Minister, it makes a lot of sense to see that two of them leading evidence against the Finance Minister at this committee level. Now, the minority raised seven grounds of which they want the Finance Minister to be removed. So far, the committee has heard five of them. Minority Leader Haruna Idris attempted going back to the third reason, but that was halted by the Co-Chair, MP for Adanse Asokwa, Kombnata Hil Hammond, Katie Hammond there. And so two more to be heard or, or, or two more issues to be discussed there by, of course, Kessia Latofosin and Haruna Idris for the committee, before the Chairman of the committee will give members the opportunity to cross-examine the two who are leading evidence at the committee level. And so so far we've heard the two statements made by Haruna Idris and of course a presentation which was projected at the committee by Kessia Latofosin. So far, five reasons for which the minority is moving that the Finance Minister be censured. Members of the committee, eight members in all, have had the opportunity to question Haruna Idris and Kessia Latofosin on these five, or Kessia Latofosin and Haruna Idris who happen to be the proponents of the motion on these five reasons or grounds for which they are moving that the Finance Minister be censured. Two more to go. The committee has taken a break because they've been sitting since 11 AM. And so they've gone on a break, we understand it's a one hour break and they are expected to return to deal with the two outstanding reasons. Now during the entire proceedings, Finance Minister Ken Oforiata has been present in the company of his lawyer, Gabi Asare Ochere Daku, who has on occasion had concern to oppose or to raise a position to some of the issues that came up. Well, the committee currently is on break and expected to reconvene or to resume in an hour. And then, of course, we'll bring you that live feed. Many thanks to you for staying with us through the committee's proceedings until now. We'll be back in an hour to bring you deliberations of the Ad-hoc Committee set up by the Speaker of Parliament on the motion for a vote of censure against Finance Minister Ken Oforiata. My name is Nana Tufua Boating. Stay with us as we bring you more exciting and interesting programming here on City TV.